Testing, testing. Can everybody hear me out there? We're going to be doing a countdown shortly, so I'm going to be giving the countdown. Doing one minute, fifteen second, or thirty seconds of fifteen seconds. I'll go ten, nine, eight, seven, six, and I'll go silent at that part. Okay, we got one minute.
Joke. What happens when a frog's car dies? Oh, that's a good, no? It needs a jump, and if that doesn't work, he has to get it towed. Oh, I made someone snort.
Okay, here we go. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. We are live, and welcome to the Wednesday, May 3rd, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Thanks, we have a nice audience today, and welcome everybody that's watching on KPTS and on our Facebook, YouTube channels, or access. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Invocation. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
County announcements. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Stephanie Birmingham with Strategic Communications. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, a time to recognize the importance of mental health and the many dedicated public servants who provide crucial services to those in need. In honor of this mission, Sedgwick County is lighting up the historic courthouse every night during the month of May. Let's give you a look at that. If you haven't seen it in person, I'd encourage you to drive by. It's really pretty, and the picture, as good as it is, doesn't do it justice. We'll also have Executive Director of Calm Care Joan Tammany at our next county commission meeting to talk about how her staff works hard every day to reach those who are often the most vulnerable in our community. We also want to tell you an update on Civic Ready Alerts. Sedgwick County Emergency Management is expanding use of Civic Ready Alerts to include seventeen more cities in addition to the initial test sites of Wichita and Mount Hope. This is a free alert system that notifies residents by phone or email of emergencies or important news in their area. To tell us more, Cody Sharvet from Emergency Management is here.
Morning, Cody. Welcome to the meeting.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Cody Sharvet, Emergency Management, just as Stephanie had mentioned. We have rolled out Phase Two. Of course, we launched the initial phase back in January. We've had a little bit of shaking out period over the last few months with City of Wichita and Mount Hope, and now we're ready to roll it out countywide. And so if folks go to our main county webpage, sedgwickcounty.org, they'll find the banner for Sign Up for Civic Ready. When they click on them, it will take them to this page. Not going to go through all this because we went through it last time, but if they keep scrolling down, they will find the two green buttons there, one to sign up for initial signup, one to modify an existing subscription. We'll just go to click signup page real quick and show you, as long as it cooperates. They'll need to fill in all the information that it asks for. The more information they provide, the better the product will be able to find them and notify them of important information. And then as they keep scrolling down, this used to have just two cities there, and now, as you'll notice, everybody's there. I want to highlight just one city in particular. The city of Derby already had a system in place for sending out community bulletins through the Notify Me product that they already pay for. Rather than maintain two lists, they are continuing to urge people to go to Notify Me to sign up for Derby news. And so we have this box here, and apparently it's turned out to be a little confusing. So it says, "Sign up for Derby Alerts at the URL that you see listed there." I can't get it to highlight, but at this line here. And then it says, "Do not sign up on this page." Well, as of this morning, eighteen people had already signed up by clicking that box. So we just want to let folks know, if they're from Derby, go to the Notify Me website there for the folks in Derby. Do not click this link because this is a dead link on this particular one. So just one little thing to be aware of. We do want people to just sign up. The only disappointing thing about this so far is that our numbers are pretty low. We only had, through the end of Phase One, we only had fourteen people, fourteen hundred people sign up countywide, which, if you break that down for the city of Wichita, it's like point zero zero three percent of the population, and we were told to expect around fifteen percent. So, you know, it's all about using a layered approach to getting this critical information, not just community bulletins, but public health alerts, public safety alerts, weather alerts that are automated, all kinds of great information there. Just one more tool in everybody's toolkit to get that critical information. So I don't want to stretch this out any longer than it needs to be, so that's all I've got, unless you have any questions. Appreciate the time this morning.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Cody. I appreciate it. And I did sign up yesterday. It's a very simple process. So far, I haven't gotten any alerts, so things must be working pretty good.
You bring up a point I did want to make this morning as well, is that people can sign up for multiple lists. So if a commissioner wants to keep track of all the cities within their jurisdiction, within their district, they can go on here and sign up for community bulletins for all of the cities that are listed there.
Thank you, Cody.
Thanks, Cody. We'll make sure that Commissioner Howell and Stephanie make sure their Derby people are following orders. And Cody, thanks to you, and again, to Julie, the reminder of a year last weekend of the Andover tornado. We all witnessed that. Thanks to your staff and stuff. It was a great one-year anniversary prayer celebration, or honor, whatever, but just a reminder. So thank you. I wanted to personally thanks y'all.
And that's it for county announcements. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? I don't see any. Thanks, Stephanie. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we had one email that we received yesterday by the deadline. Is anybody got any questions or comments on that? We will receive and file that. Motion to receive and file on second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And under public agenda, we do have one person that signed up to address the commission this morning, and that would be Mr. Andrew Crane, the one, the only, the famous. Hi, Andrew. Welcome to the meeting.
Well, good morning. Andrew Crane, Guiding Paws ICT. Would like to urge you guys on the voting for this year in November to make it accessible to the blind community and making the mail-in ballots accessible, too. So we need to be working on that. It needs to be high up on your guys' agenda to make it more accessible to the blind community. We have been talking to you guys several years about this, and we need to get it done.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Andrew? I don't see any. We do have a new election commissioner, so I know she'll, she's looking at everything in the department.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Andrew. Have a great day. Any other comments? Being none, I'll make a motion to receive and file. Motion to second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring Provider Appreciation Day.
To the audience and those watching, we do have about six proclamations today, so we've kind of spread them out, and so bear with us, and we will, I understand, we will do a photograph at the end of the sixth, at the sixth one. So the first one is proclamation declaring Provider Appreciation Day. Who has that? Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Okay. Whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on May 12th, 2023, and whereas childcare provider provides a safe, nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide and is a vital force in our economy, and whereas the pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of Sedgwick County's young children, families, and communities, and whereas childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses run and staffed predominantly by women, are still recovering from health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic while they have continued to meet the needs of families, and whereas Sedgwick County recognizes that childcare has been a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy, and whereas our future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize May 12th, 2023 as Provider Appreciation Day and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work. So now that everyone has heard that, I will move that we adopt this proclamation.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And here to accept is Lauren Allen with Lolo's Learning Center and Tori Berger with TLAD Learning Academy. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
There you are. There's Laura.
Okay, hi.
Work your way down. Yeah, kind of the podium. Thanks, Stephanie. Morning, Laura.
Good morning. Thank you so much. Being a childcare owner and director, I've been able to see firsthand the childcare crisis that affects not only Kansas but the nation. Childcare providers in Kansas, up to twenty percent are in poverty. That's a really big deal. These are the people who are pouring into our children, which are our future, so it's time that we stand up and we do what we can to support them. And just by having Provider Appreciation Day is a one small step in a positive direction towards us as a society supporting them. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Okay. Next item, please.
Item B, proclamation declaring Correctional Officers Week.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas in 1984, then-President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week. The first week in May has been recognized as National Correctional Officers Week to honor the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel nationwide, and whereas the dedication of these correctional officers and detention deputies who serve our community quietly take on a very difficult and dangerous duties, and whereas we would be unable to operate our adult and juvenile detention facilities and community correctional programs without the hard work of these professionals, staff these facilities 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and whereas Sedgwick County, Kansas is pleased to join in celebrating Correctional Officers Week, recognizing these men and women who risked their lives and served so diligently and faithfully. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through 13, 2023, as Correctional Officers Week in Sedgwick County, and we encourage all citizens to honor and show sincere appreciation for the correctional officers who make it possible to keep the detention and correctional facilities safe each day. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we would adopt this proclamation."
Second it. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And I actually don't know if this is also still true enough, but I have on my note here is that Sheriff Jeff Easter would also receive the proclamation. Do you want to do this as well, or? Another one coming up. Yes, sir, there is. Well, with that, I want to say thank you for my comments. I just want to say thank you to our corrections officers, and I'm so glad you guys are here to be recognized and appreciated. Every time I go to the facility and see what goes on, I am just amazed at the people. It is a very, very difficult job, and we love you and appreciate what you do. We know it's hard, and I don't think you get near enough recognition, certainly not enough money for what you do. So say thank you so much. I'm glad you're here to receive the proclamation.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner, Commissioners, Deputy Director Marius Salinas for Juvenile Programs and Department of Corrections. I just want to say we appreciate the commission recognizing May 7th as Correction Officer Week for our juvenile and adult facilities. We do have some staff here if they want to introduce themselves, and I'll let you guys know where they work.
I'm Samantha Esser. I work at the juvenile residential facilities. I've been with corrections for fifteen years.
I'm Kyra Anderson. I work with the juvenile detention facility. I'm also a transporter for them, and I've been with the county for, it'll be 26 years in October.
Jacob Shepherd. I work at the adult residential work release facility. I've been there for, going on about a year, and I've been in the county now, going on two years in August. I was previously a juvenile detention myself as a control booth operator.
My name is Monica Blanchard, and I work at the adult residential, and I've been with the county for a year and a half.
Congratulations.
Again, thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing next week for Correction Officer Week.
You bet. Thank you. Appreciate all you do. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, proclamation declaring Police Week.
Commissioner Beatty has this one.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm honored to read this proclamation. Whereas in 1962, the United States Congress first passed Public Law 87-726, designating May 15th of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, honoring federal, state, and local officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty in the corresponding week as Police Week, and whereas over the years devoted law enforcement officers of America have courageously sacrificed their personal safety while working on behalf of the people, and whereas because of their steadfast efforts to enforce our laws, we as citizens can enjoy a system of peace and order, and whereas Sedgwick County desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of not only its sheriff's, its own sheriff's deputies, but peace officers everywhere. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 14th through 20th, 2023, as Police Week in Sedgwick County, and we call upon our citizens to show their sincere appreciation for the many law enforcement officers of Sedgwick County, past and present, and their legacy of humbled, dedicated service to the community. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept and adopt the proclamation as read.
And I'll second that. Any questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And here to accept this proclamation is our own sheriff, Jeff Easter.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it. Jeff Easter with the sheriff's office. Every year, we accept this proclamation, both for Corrections Week and for Law Enforcement Week, very humbly. The men and women of the sheriff's office take a lot of pride in what they do from a correctional standpoint. I don't know where society would be at if we didn't have those folks working in there. And so I'd be amiss not to talk about Sidney Carter as well. She is the young lady that was killed, and she will be honored this year in Washington, DC next week. And so we'll have a contingency of sheriff's deputies that will be going out to Washington, DC to make sure that she's honored properly and that we're there with the family. So I'd also be amiss if I didn't tell everybody we're hiring. So please apply. We're hiring on both sides, both in detention and in the patrol area. So thank you again for the proclamation, and we appreciate it.
Sheriff, you know, thanks for bringing up the officer. And if it's okay with everybody, let's pause for her and her family for a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. And I know everybody joins me in wishing her family the best, and thanks for all you do, and hope the impact in your department is recovering and minimal. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item D, proclamation declaring Fight Fentanyl Awareness Week.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, and I'd like to read the following proclamation. Whereas Youth Educational Empowerment Program, or YEEP, a Wichita nonprofit organization founded in 1997, teaches financial literacy and life skills to those from birth to age 24, and whereas YEEP has further broadened educational training and experiences to include community and peer-based awareness campaigns to help better educate the youth of Sedgwick County, and whereas YEEP believes the fentanyl epidemic has taken a heartbreaking toll on Sedgwick County, claiming the lives of far too many citizens and devastating families and communities across the county, and whereas in partnership with Wichita Crime Commission, Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, Substance Abuse Center of Kansas, and the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, YEEP renews our commitment to taking bold action to prevent fentanyl-related deaths. We continue our efforts to enhance prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery support for services for individuals with substance use disorder and addiction. We affirm our duty to stop the flow of illicit drugs from reaching our communities, and whereas due to its success and demand, YEEP is expanding their facilities and partnering with other local businesses that will further enhance future possibilities for educating our community on fentanyl and other important topics. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 7th to 13th as Fight Fentanyl Awareness Week, and encourage all citizens to make themselves, their families, and friends aware of the dangers of fentanyl. Commissioner, everyone's heard this, and I make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
I'll second that. Thank you. Being no questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bickie.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And this is being accepted by Marquise Murphy, the founder of YEEP.
Welcome. Okay. Good morning and welcome. I like the shirts.
Thank you so, thank you so very much. We really, really are honored for this, and we really, really appreciate the support that we've received from you guys and Sheriff Easter. He has been our champion, and we are honored because this is an issue that needs to be addressed. We need to make sure that we're bringing awareness of it because we're trying to save lives, and those of our young people. And we have our young people completely involved in this campaign, so this is going to mean a lot to them to know that you and the rest of the community is in full support to fight fentanyl. And of course, if anyone would just text FIGHT to 54244, you keep up with everything that we're doing with this campaign.
What's the text again?
Text FIGHT. FIGHT to 54244.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And we want to thank you very much for everything that you do. There are, as in the proclamation, there are a lot of different individuals and organizations that are working together to help this epidemic that we're seeing in our community. Saturday, I know that Commissioner Lopez, myself, Dawn, the sheriff, themselves, we're all out over at Town West to fight fentanyl. In addition, we had the police department, the chief of police. We had vehicles out in the parking lot where people could touch vehicles, and you have a movie. Do you want to talk about your movie?
Yes, that is, so our young people work together in our magazine, this Teen View Magazine, they have a section called Riverside High, and they were dealing with the fentanyl issues as it relates to young people. And the exciting part about this is the kids are talking about it in their language, in their lifestyles, how they deal with it, and so that when other kids pick it up, they can relate to it, and then they see their peers, and so the message is really getting to them. And with the support of the County, Wichita Crime Commission and other organizations, we're putting out videos on social media, and the kids are getting this information and they're seeing it, but they're seeing their peers talk about it, and that right there is making a great difference. So we really appreciate that opportunity to be able to play the movie at a movie theater, and we packed the house out. We even had an overflow. And so, again, all that can be also found if you text FIGHT to 54244.
We appreciate it, and I don't know if it's legal or if it's too big to go on our website, but if it is possible, we can talk to our communications department and see if we can post that movie on our website so that everybody has an opportunity to see it that hasn't had an opportunity in the past. But it is a great movie. I did enjoy watching it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, proclamation declaring Bike Month.
Okay, this is the fifth of our six proclamations, and I will read this one. Whereas the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita Bike Walk Wichita and other community partners have collaborated to recognize National Bike Month in our community, and whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans and is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation and exercise, and whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users in an effort to reduce accidents and injuries, and whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve residents' health, well-being, quality of life, communities- community spirit, and reduction of pollution and congestion. Now therefore it be resolved that I, Chairman Peter Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-three as National Bike Month and encourage all residents of Sedgwick County, the bicycle clubs, businesses, and independent cyclists throughout our community to support the implementation of the Wichita Bicycle Master Plan dated today, May third, twenty-twenty-three. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, thank you. And here to accept the proclamation is the Medical Society of Sedgwick County and the Health and Wellness Coalition. So Shelley, good morning and thanks for being here.
Good morning.
It's good to see you.
Thank you Chairman Meitzner and members of the Board of Health. My name is Shelley Rich and I'm honored to receive this proclamation on behalf of the Health and Wellness Coalition, Bike Walk Wichita, and our partner organizations. This truly is a community plan celebration to promote biking as a safe and viable form of transportation and recreation. I encourage you to visit our website, bikemonthict.org, and our Facebook page for details and additional events. Finally, I'd like to thank Sedgwick County for your support prioritizing active living and transportation.
Thank you Shelley. Commissioner Dennis.
Shelley, thank you for being here today, we appreciate it. I know Adrian and Sarah, Commissioner Lopez and I are all on the Health and Wellness Coalition. And we appreciate everything you do. This is just a small part of what that coalition does. So, thank you for everything beyond this, too.
And I would add that we serve on the WAMPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization Board. And every year, they, they do a count of bike traffic and walk and pedestrian. And it continues to go up, up, up with all the paths and stuff, or the awareness, whatever reason, there's a lot of traffic count going up. Thank you Shelley for all you do and the whole coalition. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, resolution, proclamation declaring National Tennis Month.
Okay, this is our last one. Does anybody want to indulge in a round of tennis? So here we go. Whereas, the USTA is a nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States and leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play, from beginners to professionals at the US Open. And whereas, the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone regardless of age, environment, condition, ability, or ability through its USTA adaptive programs. Whereas, the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows that more than twenty-three point six million Americans play tennis in twenty-twenty-two, an unprecedented thirty-three percent increase in participation over twenty-nineteen and the highest number of players since the PAC study began in two thousand and seven. And whereas, by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of Sedgwick County for all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making our community a happier and healthier. And whereas, USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits and to help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities in their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-three as National Tennis Month and urge the citizens of Sedgwick County to become aware of and support the National Tennis Month dated today, May third, twenty-twenty-three. Commissioners, I'll make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, being no questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And here to accept is a familiar face in my world. She's a neighbor down the street, Deanna White. Nice to see you ma'am.
Thank you very much. Tennis is a sport almost everyone can play from ages four to ninety. We have many tennis courts and city parks across all of Sedgwick County. We have several organizations who provide tennis services to those able-bodied and those in wheelchairs, serving adults and youth, both. Tennis provides benefits for physical and mental health, including extending one's life by ten years. We encourage everyone to get outside and play. Thank you very much.
And I forgot to mention Genesis Health Clubs and all they do to massively support the tennis world in our community. So thank you, and probably regional-wise. So, thank you, the Genesis crowd that's here as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Chairman, we're gonna take pictures now for each proclamation.
Okay, so the commission will come down and then one at a time will come up with the proclamation awardees and we'll get a couple of photos. Please bear with us for the next few minutes. Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks for all, thanks for all you do. Next. Back to Sheriff.
Marquise, are you here next?
We did this yesterday when we worked at a county. We talked about it with one date.
Oh, really? You got the mind now going every time.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Well, did your corrections work or did you get that?
Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna almost bring that up. All right, we'll, we'll give it a minute to get back focused. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, Item G, resolution appointing Denise Mirowski to the Sedgwick County Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay. Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman Mike Papun, County Counselor. We can handle Items G and H at the same time, if it's the will of the Board. Both of these are appointments to Commissioner Howe, Citizens Advisory Board, District Four, or District Five, excuse me. The first resolution is appointing Denise Mirowski to the Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board. And Item H is the resolution appointing Brian Porter to this board. Both resolutions are in proper form and ask that you approve the resolutions.
Okay, Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to comment on these two people after the, after the vote this morning. But I would make a motion, we would approve the appointments of Denise Mirowski and Brian Porter to the Citizens Advisory Board for District Five.
Okay, I'll second that. Any questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
All right. And I just want to say, I think Denise is not here, that I don't see her. But Brian is. So, Brian, would you come up to the front and they'll go and do the oath and then we'll talk a little bit. Thank you.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of Sedgwick County Fifth District Citizens Advisory Board.
I do.
Hey, good morning and welcome to be here. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me talk a little bit about Citizens Advisory Board for District Five. By having these two folks appointed this morning, it brings us back to a full board. We have eleven members and I will, I will argue that I think we have the most diverse board of all the boards. I don't know the other boards that well, but I can tell you that we have really worked really hard to bring diversity of thought together. And today, because of McConnel Air Force bases in my district, we've been, we've been trying to find someone who's active-duty veteran, active-duty military member to serve on this board. And Brian is, I want to say thank you for taking the oath this morning, but you've taken the oath before because you are active-duty air force member. So, I want to say thank you for your service and I'd like to talk about Denise as well in just a moment. But I love the fact that we have a military member serving on this board. You have a huge number of people behind you that I assure that share, you know, ideals and challenges and perspectives. And so, to have you on this board is imperative. It's wonderful to have you on this board. So, you can welcome to say something. I'd like to talk about Denise as well in just a moment. Go ahead.
Commissioners, good morning. I just want to thank you for the opportunity. I've been here Sedgwick County since two thousand and eighteen. Hopefully, plan to retire here. We love it here. I want to plant our roots for our family, raise our children here. And no better way to get involved than starting with the Citizens Advisory Board. I do want to reiterate, I am acting as a private citizen, not an official representation of McConnell or the United States Air Force. But again, as an, just a private citizen. Thank you.
Very good. Well, I'm glad you're gonna make your, your home here in this area. Appreciate it.
He has a wonderful family. I've met his family, wonderful people. And I think he's just a stand-up citizen. And I, you live in Derby, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, so we have a Derby, a Derby perspective as well. But thank you for, for stepping up to serve in this role. I do see our Chairman of the Board and one of the other members wants to get a picture as well. While you guys come forward. Let me just mention also Denise Mirowski, I said that wrong. Denise actually is a Sedgwick County employee. And to have an employee sit on this board, I think is also imperative. Because we deal with a lot of stuff, it deals with employment policies and, and our budget and things like that. So, the reality is to have someone who has a perspective of an employee is also really important to have on this board. I believe she lives in Wichita. So again, the diversity of our board is second to none. I think we have done a really good job of getting just the right people. And so with that, Chairman Saldo, would you want to come forward? And we have another member, come on, come forward, at least have a picture. And if you want to say anything about these two members, that'd be great. You want to say anything about the two members who were appointed this morning? You got to know them a little bit already?
Well, I just want to say, thank you for anybody who volunteers to be on an advisory board. It does take a lot of time and a lot of effort. And I think it's important that we have diversity of thought and backgrounds and employment and histories. And so, thank you for stepping up and joining, we do appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
They would like a picture, Commissioner. Do you want to do it there? Do you want to do it here?
Just me or all of you? Just me.
Okay, thank you. Ready, next item, please.
Item I, resolution appointing Keith Shaw to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
And Mr. Papun.
Commissioners, Mike Papun, again, County Counselor. Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee is a committee made up of sixteen members. Some appointments by Board of County Commissioners, some are fixed positions on this board. This committee reviews our annual solid waste plan and does a lot of other important environmental functions. Today, we have a resolution appointing Keith Shaw to this board in position number nine. This position is someone from the private recycling or recovering industry. Mr. Shaw is a manager for the Waste Connection Material Recovery Facility. And obviously is well-qualified to be on the board. Resolution's in proper form and asks that you approve the resolution.
Okay, if there's any question, I don't see any questions, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Keith Shaw to this board.
Second.
Motion and a second. Being no questions, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. You're right. Next part of our meeting. Madam Clerk. My apologies, Mr. Shaw. My apologies for moving, Helen. Okay, go ahead.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
I do. Thank you.
And Mr. Shaw, thank you for doing this. If you've got anything to say, we appreciate it.
I just want to thank you for the opportunity to put back to the community we serve.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you again. And I apologize for jumping ahead. Okay, yeah, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, Item J, consideration of a grant application in the amount of six million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Overdose Data to Action.
Okay, good morning, Adrian Byrne.
Good morning Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So I am here this morning for your consideration of a grant in the amount of six million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention for Overdose Data to Action. I'd like to give due credit first, if I may, to Chris Stewart, my Deputy Director, who has led this grant work and spent a tremendous amount of time making sure that this grant has been completed. It has been a heck of a bear. Followed by Kaylee Hervey, Kenny Ho, and Michelle Strug and Carrie Malin also helped provide support. And Dr. Stedman provided data and summary for the Component B, which you'll hear about shortly and is also here if you have any questions. So the, and there's no match required for this grant whatsoever. So the CDC established this five-year cooperative agreement to support local health departments to use data to drive actions that reduce fatal and non-fatal overdoses in communities with a primary focus on opioids and/or stimulants. The application is due May eighth. We have received OD-two-A funds before, but it's been through KDHE and this funding is new and different. So we would be applying for required Component A, which is core prevention and surveillance strategies, and an optional Component B, which is toxicologic testing of drug products and/or paraphernalia, which our Regional Forensic Science Center would perform the testing to tra- testing to track trends in the illicit drug market, and then inform the core prevention and surveillance strategy activities. So, 40 local health departments across the country will be receiving this funding. We have no idea how many are applying, but it is based on overdose data in 2021. So, for this funding, all applicants must work with the community, public safety, and healthcare system partners, and must implement and evaluate activities related to linkage to care, harm reduction, clinic and health system best practices, and drug overdose surveillance infrastructure. So, with this funding, we would be requesting 10.5 FTE positions. 1.5 of those would be three part-time student interns, and funding for a portion of two existing positions that would be involved with this work on the project if this grant is awarded. So, there are a number of expected measurable outcomes, and I would like to share a few with you, that all recipients are expected to make progress long-term outcomes. Increase use of community health workers to link people who use drugs to care and services. Improved rapid and timely identification of changes in illicit drug market. Increased data sharing and data use that informs prevention and response efforts. Increased partnerships, collaborations, and bidirectional referrals amongst organizations working in overdose prevention. Increased capacity of staff within the workforce to connect people who use drugs to care and services. And finally, increased clinician expertise and confidence to provide equitable opioid use disorder and stimulant use disorder care. So, the recommended action, request that you approve the submission of the grant application and authorize the following actions. Acceptance of the grant if awarded. Authorize the Chairman or designated sign all necessary documents. Authorize establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term, and allowing for remaining balance at the end of each calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year. And authorize implementation of the staffing table changes identified in the Personnel Considerations section of this request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Adrian, and appreciate you and your staff, and Dr. Stedman and her staff, looking into this. Five years?
Five-year grant.
Is that what it's going to be? Five years, so it looks like a positive step. Hopefully, we get this approved.
We believe it would be community-changing.
Yes, okay, and Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Adrian, for being here. With this grant, it's a lot of money, $6.5 million, and we know that we have a fentanyl crisis here in Sedgwick County. So, what are we going to be able to do with this grant to help with the fentanyl crisis?
Well, we've already met with about, we called it speed dating, about 30 partners over a week period of time to hear what their needs were, what their concerns were, what their gaps in services were, and it's amazing, you think a million is a lot of money, but we weren't able to do half of what people really needed. But those numerous positions, three would be in-house as far as overdose prevention manager, training and community worker coordinator, and then a data analyst. Majority of the other positions would actually be in the community, located with some of our partners, working directly with them and their residents and the community on some of these activities. And because one of the main goals is to really have a collective place, to have all the data in a really collective storage, then we'd be working with our IT department, and there is a senior IT developer, excuse me, that would be part of this because we would need to create some portal or something to allow our partners to upload their information. And the more information we have about what's occurring in our community, then that allows us to plan for strategies and implementations. And then two positions for the Regional Forensic Science Center, because there's a requirement in this one that we're applying for, this B component, to test at least 500 different paraphernalias as part of it. So, this is different where it's very, and not that we don't have targeted work, because and one of the partners that we reached out to was YEEP, and we would be working with them funding, and then also the Mental Health and Drug Missus Coalition, providing, you know, if we were to get this, also providing funding there. A number of the partners that we spoke to, and in the medical community as well as therapeutic community, said that their providers were very comfortable talking about mental health, but when it came to substance use and particularly opioid usage, they didn't feel like they had enough tools or training to be able to do that. And so, part of this funding, a million and some odd dollars, a million, almost four, would be contracting with various individuals and companies to provide the training to the healthcare systems, and just ensure that there's our best practices around opioid use. You know, as you know, since 2017, opioid and fentanyl use has just blown up in our community. And we have resources, but we don't have enough resources. And one of the other big gaps where people were saying, we don't have enough people to link people to care. And so, that's what the community health workers would be doing, based in the community. We have, like ICT streets are ICT, there's two or three mid-level, I think they're AR&amp;Ps or PAs, that in their off-time are working with individuals in our community, and they need some depth as far as someone to support them. So, just, so this, what we're doing with this money is really trying to infuse it into the community to help fill some of the gaps that there are. And because of it being five years, gives us an opportunity to make that impact and create long-lasting systems.
Okay, well, my concern is, first of all, I appreciate the fact that you're going to create a couple more positions in the Forensic Science Center, because I've heard our police chief talk on two or three occasions now, where that he can't turn around his testing to find out if someone is having, has died or on drugs, especially fentanyl. So, I'm hoping that this helps with the police chief and the sheriff in order to be able to correct that. But I just want to make sure that we're not just creating positions and tracking data, that we're actually putting money where the people are fighting fentanyl. So, places like Crime Commission is doing that every day, the Sheriff's Office is doing that every day, our Forensic Science Center is working that each and every day. YEEP, who we just heard was here a few minutes ago, are doing that every day. So, I want to make sure that this money is going to places that are actually doing something to stop this epidemic, and not just creating positions and tracking data.
No, the majority of these physicians are going to be out in the community, working some on the streets with our partners that have such little resources but are fighting so hard for this.
Because we have too many young people right now that are, they're not really drug abusers, they want to get high sometime, evidently, something foreign to me, but it looks like that they want to sample something, and they don't understand that almost everything that they're sampling today has fentanyl in it, and it'll kill them. So, education is also a big part of what we need to be able to do.
And the three interns that we would be working with would be acting as health educators and would be going into some of the schools, providing some of that education.
Okay, thank you, Adrian.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. I'm reading the material here, and maybe I missed the comment, but is there any match money required for this?
There's no match money.
No match money at all, great. So, when the grant period ends, as I'm reading here, it's about 10 and a half FTE total. What happens to those 10 and a half positions when this grant comes to an end?
Well, during that time, it's always hard to know if additional grant money is going to come down, but our partners, where we are placing some of these positions, will have an opportunity to see how much worth that these positions have, and we believe they're going to have a lot of worth, and will be able to make some decisions about whether or not they want to add a position like that into their organization. And it will depend upon where we are with our numbers, but hopefully, it will be at a lower, much lower rate with our numbers, and won't be needing all that we have right now.
So, with that many positions, and you mentioned a couple going to go to RF, the Regional Forensic Science Center, but the rest is going to be assuming the Health Department area, they'll be co-located with your other staff there?
We are, we're hiring them, just because of the complications with passing money through to people, but we have, with the top police department, would like to have someone there that we wouldn't hire, they would, to help with the amount of data that they have a backlog on. At least one would be, well, we spoke with Harold Casey through SAC, and they need someone else to coordinate, and not quite a peer counselor, but additional, they need additional bodies, and so one person would be with them, and I believe would be at some of the homeless shelters, connecting people to services. And the rest, yes, are going to be in the school, educating on the grounds with YEEP and Safe Streets, and really trying to help support the boots-on-the-ground activities that we have in our community that are, can make a difference. So, housed, yes, the majority of them would have a desk, or, you know, someplace to sit when they're coming, but the main focus on all of these positions is to be out in the community.
Okay, and I didn't add it up exactly, but there's several positions here, part FTE that deal with COVID-19, and again, this is a five-year period. So, COVID-19 going out five years from this point forward would be unreasonable, I think, at that point. So, do they have the discretion to transition those folks to something that's not?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then, that regard, you know, I know SAC is a great organization, I love what they do. I think the biggest challenge over there, of course, I think, is the salary expenditures that they have to, they have to find a way to fund those things. Do we have any discretion on how we spend this money, or is it completely, is it structured by the grant itself?
It is fairly structured, although it is very community-focused, so that's why we met with so many partners to hear how they might fit in and what their needs were. So, it's structured in the regards to having to do harm reduction, having to have strategies with best practices with the medical providers and hospitals. So, salaries, giving salaries to staff, probably, we probably would not do that.
Are these considered, these are CAPRIS employees when they're hired in? They're receiving the same benefits of other Sedgwick County employees?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have, for the staff that you're adding to your office area over at the Health Department, is there space for these folks to office out of?
Well, that will be a challenge, but we will find somewhere for them.
All right, well, certainly you have a lot of, we saw letters of support in the back here, obviously, I think this is an important grant. I just want, I want to make sure, as we report the good things that this grant does, I mean, it'd be nice for the Commissioners to have some snapshots of success between now and the next five years. I don't want to wait till the end and find out that we
Absolutely, yes.
Did something at the end. I'd like to know, maybe year by year, how are we doing with this grant? That might be good to know that. Thank you so much.
If we are fortunate enough to receive this funding, I would love to be able to provide an annual report.
That'd be great. Mr. Chairman, I don't see any other comments. I'd make a motion we would take the recommended action, approve the submission of the grant application, authorize the following actions, acceptance, and all the other things listed under the recommended action.
Okay, I'll second that. Commissioner Lopez, meanwhile, has a question or comment.
Thank you. This is a really exciting opportunity, and I'm happy to hear that you're going to get in our school districts. When we talk about some of the opioid settlement money that we have, we've been working with Sheriff Easter, and that's one area that he's really focused on, education and getting in with our youth early, so I'm really happy to hear that. But I just wanted to make sure that that's going to be Sedgwick County-wide and not just Wichita. I know Wichita gets a lot of the focus just because they're so large, but I just want to ensure that our smaller districts are going to be a part of that as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck with winning the grant. Next item, please.
Item K, consideration of a grant in the amount of $475,867.74 from the Kansas Supreme Court Office of Judicial Administration for establishment of a Veterans Treatment Court in Sedgwick County.
Good morning. Chairman Meitzner, Commissioners, I'm Lori Gibbs. I'm the Deputy Director of Adult Corrections Programs. As we stood to say the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, it struck me that this is a particularly exciting day for the Department of Corrections and for the citizens of Sedgwick County, as I'm here to talk to you about a new program that we're offering, the Veterans Treatment Court. The mission of the Sedgwick County Veterans Treatment Court is to enhance public safety while restoring dignity and accountability for justice-involved veterans through innovative, comprehensive, and collaborative community-based partnerships. This specialized court would offer qualified veterans convicted of a felony offense the option of serving time in treatment instead of prison. This grant opportunity is made possible by the Burn Discretionary Community Project funding and was awarded to the Kansas Supreme Court Office of Judicial Administration. Funding runs through the end of July 2025, but the goal is to make Veterans Treatment Court a permanent part of the criminal justice system in the 18th Judicial District of Kansas. As a sub-recipient to the grant, the Sedgwick County Department of Corrections will be part of a multidisciplinary team tasked with helping justice-involved veterans overcome challenges related to mental illness and substance abuse. This model recognizes the frequency that veterans suffer from untreated mental health conditions like post-traumatic stress and addiction as a result of their military service. This project represents a broad collaboration between many partners, including the Kansas Judicial Branch, the 18th Judicial District, the Robert J. Dole VA Medical Center, the Office of the District Attorney, Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, and Sedgwick County Public Defender's Office. Additionally, a foundational tenet of a Veterans Treatment Court involves veterans being paired with veteran mentors who provide support to the veteran during the duration of their program. The mentors act as coaches, guides, role models, and advocates. I have a short video that I would like to share.
The longest war in America's history has just ended. The men and women who fought for our freedom are among our greatest civic assets. When they return home, we're thankful and proud of their service. Most veterans are strengthened by their experience in the military, but right now, more than half of the 2.6 million who deployed to Iraq and Afghanistan return with mental health conditions related to their service. One in six struggle with addiction, and one in five have PTSD. Left untreated, these issues make it difficult to adjust to life after they return and can lead to unemployment, homelessness, and arrest. There are 700,000 vets in the criminal justice system right now, many of them arrested for charges directly related to trauma, addiction, or mental illness. For a long time, our justice system relied on punishment to change behavior. This hasn't worked. New Veterans Treatment Courts provide an alternative to incarceration. These veterans-only courtrooms offer treatment, accountability, and structure while connecting them to benefits they have earned. If there is no Veterans Treatment Court available, they may end up in jail, separated from family, without treatment, and stuck in a cycle from which they may never recover. But in Veterans Treatment Courts, they are surrounded by other veterans. They receive veteran-specific treatment, meet regularly with a veteran mentor, and they have the opportunity to get their life back on track. This year, 11,000 veterans who would otherwise be behind bars are receiving life-saving treatment. The average cost to keep someone in prison is over $22,000 a year. If the veterans who need help had gone to jail instead of treatment, the bill could have been $248 million, and those that go through the program are less likely to be rearrested. The country's first Veterans Treatment Court has a 98% success rate. That's unprecedented in American criminal justice. Veterans Treatment Courts save lives, families, and futures. It returns vets to the life they fought to protect. You can help to put Veterans Treatment Courts within reach of every veteran in need. Learn more and take action at takepart.com/returntheservice.
I know many of you have had the opportunity to attend one of our drug court celebrations, and so you understand how impactful and so you understand how impactful.
Can't go, do this to clear out stuck poop fast. Fiber helps you poop, right? Nope. According to New York's top gut doctor, fiber just adds bulk and weight to poop. And that might sound like a good thing.
All right. As I was saying.
Yes, what topic are we on?
You've had the opportunity to see the impact that specialty courts, like our Drug Court program, are able to have on a very high-risk population. So we are proud and excited to offer this opportunity to our veterans' population. And with that, I would respectfully ask the Commission to approve the grant agreement and authorize the following actions. Authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents. Authorize establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term and allowing for remaining balance at the end of each calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year and authorize implementation of the staffing table changes identified in the Personnel Consideration section of this request.
Lori, thank you very much for the presentation and the comments. And the video is fantastic. I hope we all have easy access to that to share in our peers. So thank you. A couple of comments or questions. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And Lori, thank you. About four years ago, I started talking to Corrections and to Judge Gearing about starting a Veterans Court. I went to every one of your graduations for the Drug Treatment Court. And every one of those graduations, people get up and talk, and almost 100% of them say that they wouldn't be standing there in front of us talking if it hadn't have been for the Drug Court because they'd be dead. And Commissioner Howell and I are the only two veterans on this commission, but both of us really feel very deeply about making sure that we continue to serve our veterans. And that's our job, is to continue to serve and provide the support that our veterans need to be productive members of society. And military is a difficult job. I can tell you firsthand, after 29 years of serving, you're away from your home an awful lot. You, when you come back, it's difficult to integrate back into society sometimes, especially, I'm a Vietnam-era veteran. And we saw what, how the veterans were treated when they came back from Vietnam. Luckily, that's changed a lot as we've fought over in Iraq, Iran, Afghanistan, not Iran, I'm sorry, Iraq and Afghanistan. We see how that there's a change, and this is part of that change, to make sure that we look at those veterans as people that have served their country and are still able to serve. But they have some issues that we need to be able to help them through as we move forward. So I am very happy. Last November, when we voted for three new, two new judges and a magistrate, I said, man, now is the time to seize this. We can move forward because we have the staff. Now, I was a little bit worried because Corrections really plays a big part of that, and I don't know that we added staff in order to be able to help you with your job. But I am so excited that we are adding this court, and I look for great things to come out of it. And thank you for all the work that you all are doing to make this happen. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. Nice comments, and thank you, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's one of those things I like to say, it's about time. I know that everyone in this room is a fan of the idea. This is one of the things we've talked about for a very long time. If you can manage someone in the community safely by receiving treatment and supervision, it's certainly the right thing to do. Number one, it saves taxpayer money, so it's conservative. But number two, I think it's just better for everybody involved. It's more effective. And someone can reengage life more effectively if they have this program versus just simply spending time incarcerated. So I'm a member of the CJCC, and one of the goals of CJCC is to minimize or attract the population of our incarcerated folks here in Sedgwick County. But we try to find things we can do to move people out to the, to the, to the public safely. This is one of those things, and one of the things I love about this, we're starting with veterans. I would argue that if there's other people who are not veterans, this is a good model to follow for anybody who is locked up. In terms of criminal justice reform, if someone could be safely managed in the community and be supervised and treated in the community, I would rather see that happen. But of course, I'm a huge fan of anything that deals with veterans, and I think this is certainly the right place to start. David, Commissioner Dennis, mentioned his service time. I was a Desert Storm veteran. I spent, I remember, I remember the day we deployed. They, they said, we're going to go and meet the fourth-largest army, fourth-largest military in the world. And they were prepared to do chemical weapons and get prepared. They injected me with all kinds of things. I don't even know what that was, but it gave me ready to handle the chemical warfare we were about to go through. I didn't know if I was going to get home, and I was newly married. And so to me, this was a lot of stress to deal with. We spent the first month in an abandoned hotel without electricity, without water. We watched, we were certainly on a minimum of 12-hour days, on and off. We hot-bunked because there was no place else to sleep. And so there's a lot of things going on there that, to live in that environment, again, and this is a small thing for me. I can't imagine some of the other folks who are more on the front lines because that, being in the Air Force, were kind of on the back end of the conflict. But on the front end, I imagine the stresses are much, much worse. And they, I know they saw some things that I can't even imagine. So this is the right thing to do. And the folks that struggle with PTSD and mental health from being a veteran, we, I think we owe it to them, and this is certainly the right thing to do. So I am glad to see this before us. I think the video answered a lot of my questions. I had some questions at staff meeting the other day. I wish I had seen the video the other day, but that video had answered a lot of my questions. You know, the success rate, the number of folks involved in this, and the fact that it sounds like their crime must be tied to, if you will, a, one of the consequences of being a veteran that may be tied into their, their wrong choice to make, to commit some type of felony crime. That's certainly a factor here. So anyway, I think we've, I've talked too long. I would like to defer to Commissioner Dennis to make a motion. I hope he'll do that. I'd love to second that motion, and I'd love to see this move forward today. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Just one second, please. Your Drug Court graduations are so impactful, and I love when I have the opportunity to go and hear the stories that these individuals say and knowing that they wouldn't be where they are today and have their families with them if it weren't for that program. And so putting that into the same thing for our veterans is just, it's really exciting that we get to do that because our veterans, obviously, were ready to give everything for all of us. And so that we, now that we have the ability to give this back is just, it's so important. And so I want to thank all of our veterans, especially the two that are sitting up here today. My husband is a veteran. Hearing some of the stories that he has and some of the things that he carries with him, and he never went into direct combat, just makes me even more just blown away what people carry with them every day and things that I can't even imagine from the service that they've provided to all of us. So thank you for doing this. This is really important, and I'm really excited that we, that we're on board to do this.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments and echo, and thanks for the service of these two during their careers. With that, I'll defer to Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, and it is my honor to move that we approve the grant, the amount of $475,867.74 from the Kansas Supreme Court Office of Judicial Administrator, Administration, OJA, for the establishment of a Veterans Treatment Court in Sedgwick County.
I second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell?
Just wanted to, as I was thinking about my comments today, I forgot to mention a couple of things. Again, I also have attended those Drug Court graduations. It's wonderful. One of the best things Sedgwick County does is our Drug Court. And so this is going to expand the celebration of seeing people go through a very intensive program and get them on the right path. So I think if this follows that model, this is going to be great. Second of all, I sit on a number of veterans' boards, and I get to sit with people who actually have significant PTSD issues. And I just wanted to share that being able to witness the struggles these folks are dealing with, I think this is, this is something I'm very excited to do. I'm glad I got to second the motion. I just wanted to mention those two things and thank you again for the chance to speak to Mr. Chairman.
Okay, don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm sorry. Kirk Sponsel, Assistant County Counselor. As far as your motion to approve the grant, are you also moving to take the other recommended actions as part of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion to approve the grant and take the recommended actions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you, congratulations. Next item, please.
Item L, amend lease agreements for fire stations 34, 35, and 36.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. This is the first of many appearances for me this morning. And I know Mr. Papoun is waiting with bated breath for me to call on him during every agenda item. So be prepared, Mike, as we get closer to your retirement. So we are here this morning to talk about lease agreements for fire stations 34, 35, and 36 actually as a part of last year's budget actions. So why are we talking about the fire district on the county agenda? Because the county actually fronted the cash to do some station relocation and remodels for these fire stations, and these lease agreements were entered into. 10 years ago, they contemplated a 20-year term where the fire district would repay on an annual basis $397,000 to the county to repay those costs. That did also include interest. Well, if you recall, as last year's budget adoption process for the fire district, the Commission authorized a transfer of $2 million from what had been the contingency at that time to be paid toward fire station relocation to reduce the amount of debt. So it has taken some time to work through the lease agreements that were in place and to figure out exactly what that repayment would be. And so what we are asking you to do today is amend those three lease agreements. The effective, or the impact would be essentially that the fire district would pay its last $397,000 payment in 2023. That had been a part of its normal budget. It also would then pay $2 million of principal payment only. After that original $397,000 payment was made, we would cease calculating interest. $2 million would go toward that principal. What that would leave is a balance of roughly $380,000 of principal to be repaid through the 2024 budget. So we would build that into the recommended budget that you'll see in July. As a part of that, then, as soon as that is paid off in January of 2024, we also would go through, this action today would authorize staff to go through the process to actually deed the properties from Sedgwick County to Fire District Number One. So this action today would be the last you all need to do in order to execute all of that and to set us up so that early in 2024, the fire district is clean and clear of any repayments that it would need to pay back the county. And its only debt at that point would be for any of the lease purchase agreements that are made for their significant pieces of equipment. A corresponding agreement is on consent for the fire district so that if you approve this as new business, you could pick that up as a part of consent. And that would be the sum total of what you all need to do in finance and legal, and fire district would take appropriate actions to get all of this done. So with that, are there any questions? I'm taking it easy on him. I've still got two more agenda items to come up here for. He was, I will tell you, the original creator of the original amendment, so I was hoping to do something. This is just going to be constant ragging on him until his retirement, just so you know. So with that, Commissioners, I recommend you authorize the lease agreements as well as the actions necessary to take by staff in order to get these stations repaid and transferred to the fire district. So with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Thanks for the explanation on this, because that was the first question, is why is it on this agenda? But that's good.
It's a very good question.
So thank you for answering right off the bat. I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion to approve as presented. There's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you again, Lindsay. Next item, please.
Item M, consideration of a purchase agreement of an airplane for the sheriff's office.
Okay. Sheriff Easter, welcome back.
Morning again, thank you. So I guess I will start. So as we've been talking for almost three years, a little over three years, about our current aircraft and the age of it, the fact that there's no parts being made for it anymore, we approached the Commission about purchasing a new airplane, a used newer airplane to us. So during that timeframe, the budget for that was about 1.8 million that was in set-aside money for what we pay the fleet. During that time COVID hit, we had already narrowed down that we wanted to look at a King Air 300 because of its capabilities, better gas mileage, those type of things than what we were seeing in the Turbo Commander that we currently own and other brands of aircraft. Because of COVID, we spent two and a half years looking at planes that would disappear off the market within about a day or two once they hit the market. We had one opportunity to maybe re-outfit a King Air 300, and then that didn't work out either. And so on top of that, those planes were going for a lot higher price than what we could afford. And so we recently came to you with another proposal. The state of Kansas, KHP, has a King Air 350 that they use. They are currently having another aircraft that they are purchasing that's being built by Textron here locally and reached out to Textron and to us to see if we'd be interested in that particular plane. We met with Textron and looked at the plane. The plane is actually worth about 4.2 million. And our group here at Sedgwick County started in with negotiations with Textron on purchasing that plane. We came to you all in an open meeting, very transparent about it, to discuss the possibility of more funds being needed. You granted those funds. We have now entered into a contract for 2.5 million. I remind you, that plane is worth 4.2 million. So the partnership between KHP and the state and Textron, that's how come we're getting the plane for, or we're proposing to get the plane for 2.5 million. This particular plane can actually fly more inmates than our Turbo Commander. It actually will save us money when we are going to far distances, to the coasts, which we do go to quite often compared to the Turbo Commander. Some of the questions that was asked during this process is ground travel, aircraft travel on, you know, through Spirit or through Allegiant or any of those other major aircraft companies. And we discussed that openly with you the last time we discussed this. We did comparisons on some of our trips. One thing that I will tell you, when we take our trips, very rarely are we just picking up one prisoner. We try to schedule our trips so that we're able to fly out and pick somebody up and on the way back, fly through a place that we're going to be coming back towards. Wichita, say like out to Seattle, stop in Denver, and, or stop in Seattle, stop in Denver, pick up those inmates, and then bring them back to Wichita. So we very rarely go on a trip long distance that we're not picking up more than one prisoner. We calculated several trips that we had taken, including looking at a Citation Jet, a Beach Jet 400, a King Air 300, the drive trip, what it would cost for the Turbo Commander, and then also flights, commercial flights. I will tell you, the biggest problem with commercial flights is the pilot can tell you, you're not coming on my plane with a prisoner or armed. And we've ran into those situations. Also, that is, can be very expensive mode of travel. We also were asked, how come we can't contract with some agencies out there that drive prisoners around? There's two issues with that. There used to be what was called the Northwest Passage. There used to be what was called the Northwest Passage, which we became a part of, and that has now gone defunct. It does not operate anymore. The other problem was some of the private entities that do the transport through buses is there's times we need that prisoner back, and it's taken other agencies over a month to get that prisoner back, plus other issues with those prisoners that weren't being addressed, such as their medical issues, those type of things. And so it is more feasible with all the studies we've done, and we've done studies for ten years that I've been here in reference to owning that particular plane. We do not fly that plane for other issues unless there's an emergency issue that comes up when it comes to, you know, flying any sheriff personnel. One other thing that we have flown the plane for, just like we will, because it's cheaper for us to transport our own people to the National Memorial to honor Sidney Carter, it's cheaper for us to fly the five sheriff personnel out to Washington, D.C. and back than it is taking commercial flights. That's the only other thing that we have used it for is when Deputy Coonsy died and when Deputy Carter died. And so with that, I think we've done our due diligence. I think we have educated the Commissioners on exactly what this is and why there is a need for an aircraft. We transport or we fly two to three times a week to pick up prisoners. And so our average monthly hours on a plane is fifteen hundred and sixty hours, which is comes down to about two to three trips a week. Currently, our pilot and our guard are in Oklahoma. They drove. We're not, if it's cheaper to drive to places, we drive. But when we're talking about having to go to Florida, when our plane is down, which has been down quite often because of the age of it, we're talking twenty-three hour drives to Florida. And then coming back, we have to find jails to hold the prisoner overnight so we can do twelve-hour drives, those type of things, when you throw in per diem, when you throw in overtime costs. It's just not practical to do that, plus to our personnel. If we had to drive everywhere, we would have to add personnel just to drive across the country to pick up prisoners. And so with that, I'd also like to bring Lindsay or Joe down here to talk. I understand there's been some questions about the particular aircraft, because it is actually a King Air 350 that we're proposing to purchase instead of the King Air 300.
Thank you, Sheriff. Question came up this morning as to the designation of the certification that was found on the airplane. The type certification that the FAA issues for the Model 300, King Air Series, all of those contain the number 300, regardless if it's a 350 or a 360 model. And so the FAA issues that type certificate, which contains the 300 on all of those models. But then to help us to designate whether through our due diligence, whether we got the right model airplane, they're also assigned a serial number. In this case, the serial number for this plane is FL 323, which is tied to an original certificate showing that the plane was manufactured November 22, 2001, and that 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 plane was therefore, because of the 2001 manufacturing date, is officially a Model 350. So that's where some of the confusion lies. I hope that answers that question. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a couple of questions, but.
Get excited, sorry.
Sheriff, we've got a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Here now? Okay, I think first was Commissioner Beatty.
Yeah, thanks, Sheriff. You actually answered most of my questions in your comments. I appreciate it. When you first had the conversation with me about this and made me aware that this is a conversation that's been going on for some time now, I was actually, I had no idea how many times you're transporting. My first questions were, what is the need? Can you quantify the need? Two to three times per week is a significant need. So I appreciate the due diligence that you put into this, and I do see this now as an urgent need for your department. My question really is for Lindsay. So the 2.5 is the purchase price. I'm reading correctly that in 2021, 1.89 million was already transferred from the fleet fund to the Equipment Reserve Fund, so the incremental $650,000 is coming from where exactly?
So what we will do is if you all approve this purchase today, we will do a transfer from the operating reserve in the general fund to the sheriff's fleet budget, and we will make the purchase from the Equipment Reserve in conjunction with the sheriff's fleet budget, which is unusual. But because of the logistics and the way this played out, it's how we needed to make it work. So we're saying approximately $650,000. There are some incidental costs that the sheriff is picking up through some of the inspection and other things. So it will be in that ballpark, but it will be enough to make sure that the sheriff has enough to cover the costs of all of the incidentals to this purchase price as well.
Very good. Okay. No further questions.
Okay. Good questions. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Sheriff, and especially Joe. We did have questions first thing this morning. Both Commissioner Howe and I received phone calls from an individual that had questions on this type of aircraft, and I appreciate that you answered those in an open session today, so we know exactly what this plane is and what the value of this plane is. Also, we've been looking at planes now since before COVID, and every time we turned around and we found a plane and we were getting ready to buy it, somebody offered a whole lot more money than what we had available, and it sold. So I do want to thank KHP and Textron, because they have actually worked with us on this very diligently. So right now, I think that we've got a great deal. I want to make sure that this this deal on this aircraft moves forward, because we've been talking about it a long time. The old aircraft is like fifty-year-old French-built airplane. Now we're buying an airplane that's built right here. So I think that that's absolutely the right thing to do, so I'd be happy to support this. Thank you.
If I could make a comment about that, too. The ancillary stuff dealing with this particular plane, which is a benefit to us, is that it can be serviced here. The Turbo Commander has to be serviced elsewhere, in Indiana and in Oklahoma. The other thing is, is all the pilot training is here. We, for the Turbo Commander, we have to fly to Florida, which is more of an expense to get trained. So there's a lot of benefits to this particular plane being manufactured here, serviced here, and our pilots can be trained here.
Okay. Thank you. That's a good point. Great point. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, you've answered most of my questions. Like Commissioner Beatty, when I first became a Commissioner, I had a lot of questions about this. It was surprising to me that we had a plane, but I did a deep dive. I have an aviation background, so I was really interested in this idea to find out whether this made sense or not. And I have to tell you, after I did a lot of data analysis on this, it made a lot of sense. This is the most conservative way to do this, and so I think that we're doing the right thing today. Couple of other questions, though. What are we planning to do with the old plane?
We're going to try to sell it. We have had two inquiries from possible, from folks that want to purchase that plane.
And the revenue from that, will that go to replenish this fund? Undo the?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, that's great. And I don't know, maybe I misheard, but I'm pretty sure, I must have misheard, or maybe you accidentally said something differently, but how many, you said fifteen hundred and sixty hours per month. You meant per year?
Um, per year.
Fifty-six hours per month.
I'm getting that from our judicial folks, but yeah, it's fifteen hundred and sixty hours per year.
Per year?
Yes.
Okay. About how many people do we transport per year? Do you have any idea? You said two or three per week, flights per week, but how many?
Yeah, I don't. I don't have that number. I can get that for you.
So I'm going to support the motion today, assuming that there is one, but I think it'd be nice to know, because I am getting some questions. How many people were transported? How many miles, how many prisoner miles do we cover with this plane? That might be a good thing to have, because again, if you think about prisoner miles, again, you mentioned Washington State or whatever, those are, those are very complicated trips.
Yes, they are.
And again, this plane, I assume, has longer range than the old plane, so we can maybe stop less often for gas or whatever, a whole more people. I guess my last question would be this. Does this plane have any type of special accommodations for handling a prisoner inside the plane, or will it have something that's?
Well, we'll have to modify that. Yes, sir.
So again, so using private aircraft, as I had that question from somebody, so why don't I just hire a private pilot to use their plane? Well, I think this is, has special accommodations built into it for?
Yes, we do. Yes, we have to make sure that they're secured correctly, make sure that, you know, we've transported as many as three to four prisoners at one time. So you have two pilots and then one guard. And so they're comfortably, their belly chains are attached to a, it's like a bolt with an eye bolt to the floor of the plane, which they do not have that in other aircraft. We have to put that in there.
Well, I'll be supportive of the of the consideration this morning, and I've seen Con Air, so I don't want to have that happen here, so.
That'd be two of us. Thank you, sir.
There you go. Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion, if that's okay. Make a motion, we approve the, we approve the recommended action as listed in the resolution.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Sheriff.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Hopefully that dive-bombing moth has now disappeared from you guys today.
That's right.
Thank you.
We had our security chief here watching that moth, so he's worried about it. Okay. Next item, please.
Item N, update on the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Spend Plan.
Good morning, Lindsay. Welcome again.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I think I failed to identify myself for the record several times now, so my apologies. Lindsay Porusso, your CFO. So continuing your very diverse theme this morning, I am back to give you an update and request your permission to update the ARPA Spend Plan. So you may recall, back in February, we came and presented on this to you, and at that time, you had a number of questions. We scheduled a staff meeting briefing for you, and at that time, we were able to go through a number of those questions. We did still have a couple of questions that came up after we had that conversation, and so I want to hit on those right now in a public setting so that we can make sure we cover all of those and make sure that you're comfortable with proceeding with the spend plan until we come back to you in about a quarter with any updates or requests for changes. So I have no intention of going through this particular slide here. We went through it last time, but what this is, is a refresher on all of the COVID funding streams that have come to Sedgwick County since COVID first started in March of 2020. Thankfully, we have been through now two audits where COVID funding has been included in the review, and thus far, we have been very fortunate, after a lot of hard work by the finance staff and legal staff who have put in hours and hours of effort to have zero findings, and hopefully we can continue that in our 2022 audit. So for ARPA, as a reminder, we did receive 100.2 million dollars in two separate tranches. The first half tranche in 2021, the second half was received last year in 2022. When that law was issued, the Treasury put out what's called an interim final rule, and that was anticipated, we had feedback that was due in July, we anticipated getting something back by August or September. And so that's why on this particular slide with the timeline, you can see that we had kind of a choppy process in terms of bringing spending plans to you. So we had some intensive discussions in July. We brought you back some amendments in September and December, because we kept hoping that a final rule would come out, and so we were doing spending plans in chunks. So then the final rule was finally issued in January of last year. It did not actually go into effect of April until April of last year. So you'll recall, we were doing internal needs assessments and external needs assessments concurrently to try and figure out how to best allocate those funds. And so under that final rule, recognizing that it was going to be effective in April, you all authorized a spend plan in March, and since then, that has been the basis for every spend plan that we have brought back to you on these other dates. Now, when you had questions at our last meeting, many of those circled around Health Department, risk fit testing, some of the logistics positions that we saw, some of the funding that had been set aside for cleaning services, and some of those things. And so on March 7, every department that has projects in these categories came and presented. And so at that time, based on the feedback that we had already received from you, we had made a couple of adjustments. And so I want to call those out quickly related to the 2023 spend plan. So we were able to make adjustments and revise down the Health Department budget. We were able to shift funds from Communications and Medical Services to what is now this COVID surge contingency, which is the last line here. So instead of having those dollars specifically allocated to those buckets in public health, there's now this COVID surge contingency that the manager can access if for some reason there is a variant that comes and spikes, and we have to quickly change what we're doing, this funding is available for that and set aside for that purpose, and it comes from those original sources. You also had questions about our Recovery Connect program. Following that discussion, our team put together a white paper. They were able to brief all Commissioners on how the program was being executed in the multiple community partners. At that time, the consensus that we heard back from the Commission was support to continue the program for now, but to restrict the focus, to have it focus on workforce development, on daycare, and support to nonprofits that were hit hard through the program. So our team is currently working with the WSU team to implement those recommendations. It is, we have also, and you'll see on the 2024 slide, we have advised that there will be no more than $250,000 potentially allocated through 2024. But all of that is contingent on being able to revise that focus and come back with performance measures and objectives that show that the program is achieving what we expect it to achieve. And by we, I mean you all as the policy setters. So we will be giving you updates on that in the interest of fairness. They're being given the opportunity to make those adjustments now. We'll continue to report back to you, and at any time, we can be flexible on that contract or how we focus that program. That was something that the county put out an RFP for. This is our public-facing program. When folks come to us and ask for ARPA support, this is something that is convenient for us to refer to them, because this is a group that goes out and tries to connect individuals, nonprofits, and businesses with resources and grant opportunities. For court backlog and public safety, we have added one component to this group, and that is based on your Public Safety Roundtable that you had several weeks ago. One of the things that we have consistently heard, and it even came up earlier today, is the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, or the CJCC. So back in 2007, 2008, there was discussion of a jail expansion and actually a mill levy increase for that and as well as NCAT. At that time, the CJCC was empowered, and they actually came up with a number of programs, including Drug Court, that have been discussed today to try and alleviate that burden on the criminal justice system. At that time, there was actually a staff member dedicated in the Public Safety Director's Office, a CJCC analyst. That person was responsible for staffing those meetings, going out and finding the data, providing answers. And so what we would recommend as a part of the ARPA Spend Plan is to use ARPA funding to fund that analyst, to provide that support based on the directive that the Commission gave at your Public Safety Roundtable, to retool CJCC and get that spun back up as we continue to hear about all of these pressures on the criminal justice system. So we would add that funding to your court backlog and public safety bucket. That would allow the position to be in place at least through December of next year, and then depending on how things are going, the Commission can make a decision about whether to fund that position long-term or whether that's a short-term position as the CJCC is retooled and stood back up. So within ARPA management and compliance, we have reduced that figure down as well. We have put two positions that had been on the finance staffing table that are vacant. We also put that in the COVID surge contingency. We don't necessarily anticipate needing those positions if there's a variant surge, but as the mental health conversation, mental health hospital conversation continues with ARPA funds, and we get closer and closer to hitting that December 2024 deadline, the more concerned I get about making sure that we have adequate resources in place to support the project management team. And so we would ask that. And so we would ask that if it gets down to it and we need an extra body to provide that administrative support, we could come to the manager to request that. So it's in the surge contingency, but not necessarily tied to a COVID variant itself. So with all of that said, the spend plan that you have, which is attached as your final page in your PowerPoint packet that you have, that final page shows that the 2023 budget that is proposed is 46.3 million. Now, a good chunk of that is associated with the public safety courthouse remodel, sheriff cameras, those things that we don't necessarily anticipate being completed in 2023. But we know that the funds need to be there so they can be committed. And then we would anticipate any of those dollars rolling forward into 2024. So when we look at 2024, you'll see the exact same programs. Nothing has changed. But for that amount for Recovery Connect is definitely decreased. And again, that is pending a lot of additional information between now and the end of the year. And then, of course, it's a much smaller figure because the contingencies exist in 2023. Whatever is not spent from those contingencies would roll forward to 2024. We continue to expect cost overages for the CIP projects that we have. So we're reluctant to designate these dollars to any other specific program until we get all of those bids in and see how the work is actually being completed and change orders and things like that. So if we look at the grand total, just like before, this does allocate all $100.2 million to various projects. There are some of these that you have heard. Folks will be coming to probably ask you for additional positions or things that will carry forward through the 2025 budget process. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that and report on those as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions if there's anything I missed. Otherwise, I recommend you approve this version of the spend plan and we'll be back in about a quarter to report out on how things are going.
Okay. Thank you for that thorough explanation. We've got a couple of questions here. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Lindsey. I appreciate your rundown here. And I appreciate that you've made adjustments based on some of the feedback that was given. I think some of these are really good adjustments. Real simple question is what happens? I mean, we have nearly $14 million in contingency. What happens if we get towards the end of this or we're nearing, you know, landing this plane and there's a significant chunk there? What happens to those dollars in contingency?
So it depends on honestly what's happening with ARPA at that time. Right now, I've heard that there are pushes by a number of folks across the country to extend the deadline on ARPA because a lot of individual, a lot of counties, cities are using these funds for capital projects. And at the same time, infrastructure bill money is coming out at the same time that there are still supply chain issues and workforce challenges. It's making it challenging for all entities to get their projects done in this timeline. So if that is the case, that it gets pushed out, then we would need to have an entirely separate conversation with the Commission about how that looks. If it does not get extended, then the simple answer is we would come to you and get direction on exactly what you would like to do. One of the options that is available under ARPA is what's called revenue replacement. Under the computation that they have put together, the county just through 2021, just through 2021, this doesn't even include 2022, based on the federal government's computation, we have lost $40 million of revenue due to COVID based on the assumptions that they use. And so what that means is Sedgwick County would be entitled, under that calculation, to have up to 40 million plus whatever they calculate for 2022 when our audit is complete. That would be available to be used for what they term traditional government services. So at that time, if that's something that we want to talk about, we can certainly look at that for other CIP projects. One of the things you'll hear next week in your budget hearings is some enormous pressures on our budget for CIP and not just things we've already discussed, but new projects that got brought forward this year. And so as we have those conversations, if there are opportunities to use funds for that to offset the, the burden to taxpayers, that's certainly something we can look at. So I know you said simple question, but I didn't give you a simple answer, so I apologize.
I anticipated that. Last question. It's an exercise for the public to be aware and also for us. Remind everyone again what the timelines are to commit the funds and for projects to be finished with their ARPA dollars.
So we have until December 31st, 2024 to enter into any contracts or obligations for the funds. And so when we say a contract or an obligation, it's not as good as putting it in a spend plan. We actually must have a vendor. We have, must have gone through a competitive procurement process to get that vendor and have the actual dollars in a purchase order, some kind of form of paper that says that, that we're on the hook for those dollars. So that's December 31st, 2024. And then by the end of December 31st, 2026, we must have all work completed and paid. So that would mean if there's a construction project, the punch list is completed.
It's got to be done.
And every invoice is out the door.
This includes the, the state mental health hospital we've been in discussions for, correct?
Right. If we get the 25 million from the state's ARPA allocation, the exact same rules.
This hospital has to be built by 12/31/2026.
It must be constructed, completed, and invoices paid by the end of 2026, which we all know is not, paying things is not always as fast as you might expect.
Thank you, Lindsey. Appreciate it. Thanks, Chairman.
You bet. Good questions. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I think we're going to have to submit some letters to our senators and our representatives in the very, very near future, asking them to extend the deadline on ARPA funding, especially with the funding that is coming out of the state with Spark Money. I don't see how, any way that we're going to be able to build a hospital and have all the money expended by December of 2024 for that. If the legislature and the powers to be in, in Topeka would ever come around to sending us the money, it would be very nice. But right now, since they haven't chosen to, to send that money to us, it's putting us in a bigger bind every single day. So first thing is I think we need something on our agenda in the very, very near future to extend the deadline so we can send letters to, to Washington DC. The second thing is that the money that we already have, that revenue replacement is something that I think is very vital to us. And so if we're going to worry about revenue replacement, we need to make sure that we're making a wise decision on the money that you have in the spending plan right now. And right now, you've got a half a million dollars in 2023 for Recovery Connect and a quarter of a million dollars in 2024 for Recovery Connect. I do not believe that those are numbers that I can support whatsoever. I, I agree totally that we need to revise the contract, work, look at workforce, childcare, and a few nonprofits that may still be worrying about COVID. But it has to be something that's related to COVID because that's what we got the money for. And COVID is pretty well over. So I want to make sure that we're not wasting any of that money. So today, the, the agenda says that we're going to receive and file, but your slide up there says we're going to approve the revised spending plan. I won't approve any of those. I'm voting against, no matter what you do with it at this point, because I totally disagree with the half a million dollars in Recovery Connect this year and the $250,000 next year. We can use that money much better at the end of this, putting in a revenue replacement for this county so that we can choose where it's going rather than just writing a blank check to someone. And the only thing I've seen come out of Recovery Connect so far is that they sent us a couple of T-shirts and a, and a pen the other day, and a bag, which is a total waste of the funding for Sedgwick County. So I had, I would cut a long way from this $500,000 and this quarter of a million in, in a year. So at this point in time, no matter what the motion is, I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Let's clarify. Is this a, is this a receive and file or do you need a motion to approve?
I do need a motion to approve. I apologize for my error on that.
Okay, so it's incorrect on, on the agenda?
Yes, I apologize for that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I know it's been a lot of, a lot of work has gone into this and I am in agreement with Commissioner Dennis. What I would like to know, is there any way we can modify this to deal with that concern?
I, I think we, we can. We are negotiating with them in good faith right now. And so I would feel uncomfortable giving you a dollar today for what the workforce, daycare, and some nonprofit support would look like. But if you all give us a dollar, that, I mean, that is a policy decision for the Commission. And we would go back and, and let the recovery folks know that, that that's what they need to live up to.
I would feel better about supporting the plan if this was adjusted. So I don't know how to make a recommendation on that, but I do agree with him on that. You know, a lot of times, a lot of times, things come before us. I don't love everything about something. I might not like something about whatever the, the issue is, and I might still vote for it because of the things I do support. So most of this I support. Just a very small part I don't support. So again, I don't know what to do, how to vote for this with, you know, with a total agreement. I don't totally agree. So I, I'm conflicted on what to do this morning. I would like to see some type of adjustment made because I do think that he's right, that this is no longer useful spending of that particular part of this fund, funding, so.
Well, and I will tell you, I think, I think the consensus from the Commission when we talked with you all was that tweak, not tweaks, adjustments to the program are necessary. I think the, the challenge that we have is working through that in good faith with our vendor. This is an RFP that we put out on the street. We asked them to come to us with that. We didn't necessarily have a prescribed plan because we had never stood up a community navigator program. So we asked them to come to us with the best plan they had. It went through a competitive process. They were awarded the contract. And so I, I believe very much that when I come back to you in a quarter, this will look different. But in the interest of, of having that good faith exchange with WSU, that's why I'm not able to give you a number today.
Any other problem, of course, I think is, I don't do this on the fly. There is a program that's in full operation right now. I, I don't know how you suspend that today. It might take a couple of months to wind this thing down. I'd, I'd like to encourage, I'll support this today, but the, my, 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 I hope my words are taken seriously. We need to wind that part of this thing down. So the next time you come back, that's not presented. And with that, with that understanding, I would support the motion to approve the plan.
And, and they have received that message.
Commissioner Beatty, I think you were next.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I understand the conversation around Recovery Connect. I, I would, would hope that we can continue that conversation if we move. I'm, I'm in support of this. But because there is so much apprehension, and I do believe we need to revisit and have a deeper conversation of what that looks like. Is it possible to remove that portion and we can address that separately?
I think we, we can, but the, there will be some real life consequences to that.
Could you explain what those consequences would be?
Yes. So right now, to Commissioner Howe's point, that program is up fully operational. They have staff on board that they're working with. They have community partners that are out actively promoting the program and trying to connect those resources. So if the county chooses to cease that funding, one, there's a contract issue because we, I am, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but within that contract, there's a certain amount of time that we have to give them notice that we're winding down the program. So that would be concern number one is giving them that adequate notice. So if we cease funding that today, it kind of leaves them in the lurch and it also gives me some concerns from the, the contract portion. Doesn't mean we can't figure it out if that's the direction that we're given from the Commission. But I, I don't see a way that today we can just say we've stopped.
Okay. That was kind of my concern too. I do have organizations in my district that have taken apart in Recovery Connect. And so I, I'm going to support this, but I do appreciate the conversation that needs to continue on with this. But you're right, this is a program that is stood up. They are functional. And we may have some concerns and some heartburn over some of the outcomes, but I think those are things that we need to have deeper discussions on. So I appreciate your, the insight of what that looks like. And I do think we need to have a deeper conversation here.
Understood.
And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I've been speaking about Recovery Connect almost every time that you brought it up.
Yes, you have.
And still, we haven't come up with a resolution. So I'm disappointed. I'm truly disappointed that when we talk about it, you went and talked to all five Commissioners and we came back with what we think we ought to have. And we agree with that. But yet you leave a half a million dollars in this year and a quarter of a million dollars in next year. So am I disappointed? Absolutely.
Understood.
But I, I, I want a resolution. So if we vote on this today, we don't have a resolution. Well, I think we need to defer it, let you all come back and tell us what we really need in here for Recovery Connect and vote on an actual spending plan. And that's not what we're going to do if we vote on this today. So I make a motion to defer until staff can, can research this.
There's a motion to defer. Is there a second? Commissioner Lopez?
Can I just ask a question? If we're visiting this, you had mentioned quarterly. If we make a motion to defer this, would you be willing to defer it until that and just keep it as is? We don't do anything with it today? And then when we come back, or how quickly are you wanting? Because if we have other, if, if we're paying salaries or whatever it is with this, I'm uncomfortable just shutting it down today. So how much time are you wanting to defer it for?
Well, that's why I was, made a motion to defer it. That way we don't have to shut it down today. But again, I've asked the staff more than one time.
Yes, sir.
To come up with something alternative and they have not done that yet. So I, I defer it for six weeks and come back.
Is six weeks enough time for you?
Without a doubt, we can, we can certainly do that. I think the only concern I would have is we do have the new piece, which is the CJCC analyst, and if the Commission would authorize us proceeding with that. That would be the only thing I would, I would hesitate on. It's not that we can't. It's just a matter of getting that resource in place.
Modify my motion to defer for six weeks.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Howe?
I guess I'd like to have the motion reread. Does this include an exception for funding the analyst position at CJCC?
Not as I heard it.
Pardon me?
Not as I heard the motion. It would just defer this whole thing.
I would support the motion if it included that, but as it's currently worded, I would not.
I don't have a problem with that.
Amended.
So the, the motion that includes a deferment of the entire plan by six weeks, but it also includes approval of ARPA spending for the analyst position for CJCC.
That's what I understand, sir.
With that, I'll, I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Okay, there's a, a motion. And I'd just like to comment that if Recovery Connect has been paying attention, personally, I benefited much more with referring numerous phone calls and numerous inquiries to Recovery Connect. And I, I, I personally was, and had feedback from those people saying this was very helpful for us to be navigated towards a potential grant opportunity or whatever. So I, I got a lot more out of it than a T-shirt. And I, I think that's a little bit exaggeration. I'm, I have incredible trust in our finance department that's already been through two audits and passed with zero findings. I have a lot of confidence in that. I don't mind relooking at the Recovery Connect, the true expense versus the budgeted expense. I think there's been true expenses and budgeted expenses on about every one of these categories, including the construction of our court systems and blah, blah, blah. So I have confidence in what you presented. I, I'm not supportive of delaying. I think everybody, you know the message. Recovery Connect, I'm sure, is looking at their future as well. And so I just want to let the public know that at least one Commissioner has gotten a lot of information. I don't know if it's $500,000 a year worth, but out of $100,235,000, $500,000 may or may not be the right, right number. But at least we were able to refer many, many agencies to this. And we didn't have to invent or find our own community navigator person or our own community navigator department and a research department and all the things that would do if we just shut it down and we took it on our own to receive those. So I just want to make sure that if, if Recovery Connect's listening, I want to, at least on my behalf, I appreciate some of the work that they've been doing and helpful. So, and I, I will not support deferring it, but, but it's okay. We'll, we'll do the will of the, of the Commission. We've got a couple of people still wanting to talk. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Chairman. And, and I think you had some great points. I am comfortable with deferring it. But I also see the value in Recovery Connect and what they've done. And it has been really helpful when people reach out to me and ask questions that I have someone that can, I can defer them to and know that they're going to get help, that I might not be able to answer those questions. And so I, I see the value in it. I think deferring it might put others at ease a little bit more if we can have an actual value of how much we're going to spend this year. I think that makes it an easier pass. And I always think it's better when we can pass things unanimously and not have a contingent vote, hopefully. We'll see. But I, I am, I am supportive of Recovery Connect and I want to make sure that that is known and not my vote to. is known and not my vote to weight. It's not reflective of that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner How?
Thank you, Chairman. Just curious to Lindsay, did you actually poll the five commissioners independently to find out whether there was a consensus for anything?
So Brent and Anisa met with each of you individually. I sat in on one of them. But yes, this, this recommendation was developed based on the consensus of what we heard from those folks. We did receive direction to narrow the focus. It does take some time for us to go back to them and work to develop a revised budget for that. And I do apologize that it's taken longer. I understand the expectation is to get that done as quickly as possible, but that's, that's where we stand.
I, I think to Chairman Meister's point, I do think that Recovery Connect has served a purpose. My only concern is we're at the end of a three-year pandemic. I mean, we're, it's, it's even, but even the president declared it over. I mean, I think that, that, that resolution sat on his desk for a year, but he, he signed it. And so it's, I, I think the idea that we have active programming that deals with COVID-19, it just doesn't feel right to me. And at this point, I think it is time to wind that down. I think they have done a good job. I think it was important while they, while they did their thing, and, and we needed it earlier. You know, we, it took a while to get that up, you know, get it moving forward, but when it finally got moving forward, it did a great job. So I don't want to say anything negative about Recovery Connect. I think they did a great job. But having said that, if there was a substitute motion to approve the plan with the idea that we would wind this down so that, you know, review the contract and intend to end that part, that part of the plan, I'd, I'd be willing to support a substitute motion as well. I think that the plan overall as presented today was fine without one concern. So, you know, I don't know if Chairman Meister would agree or not, but I think a substitute motion that, that approved the plan with the intent to wind that piece down and not saying that they're not, they didn't do a good job, I think they did. I just think their time is over. It's, it's at the point we need to end it. You know, we're, we're in the, we're, we're at the end of the, the third year of this. Actually, we're starting our fourth year. So if I count that correctly. I think a substitute motion to do that would be fine. I'm not going to make that motion, but if somebody else would do that, I'd, I'd support that as well. Thank you.
Well, and if I could just add some clarification. So CARES was a response bill. ARPA is intended to be a recovery bill. So it's COVID and it's negative economic impacts, and it's intended to focus on the growth, groups who were hardest hit. And so one of the things that Recovery Connect does is it looks at, if you remember our conversation about qualified census tracts, it's designated by the federal government as areas that are the highest poverty. We have a number of qualified census tracts in our urban core, and so that has also been part of the conversation with Recovery, Recovery Connect is focusing their efforts on theirs areas to help those folks who were most impacted by COVID. So it's not just the COVID illness, it's also the impact that it had on folks getting back to work, daycare, those kinds of things. So just, I just wanted to clarify, there was the response bill that was CARES and the recovery bill, that's ARPA. And I've left you speechless.
Okay, so with that, I will, I will make a substitute motion that we approve the plan as presented with the intent on Recovery Connect to start a winding down process or Recovery Connect supplied the documentation to justify the continuation at some level or another.
A second.
May I ask for clarification on the timeline of when you expect to have that back? Six weeks?
How about the next quarterly report?
Okay.
Tom? Okay, you, you got that, you got that clerk, basically?
Yep.
To wind down, approve the plan, the substitute motion to approve the plan with the intent to wind down the Recovery Connect unless there's justification that's provided to us by the next quarter to continue on in some level or not.
Yes.
And that's your intent to second that?
My intent is a second.
And the, the manager?
Chairman, I just want to make sure that we've talked a lot as a staff about Recovery Connect and pivoting them and getting some, you know, productivity out of them. They've never spent what was budgeted to them. We're very discerning on what they do. So we've had numerous conversations. We've heard you, Commissioner Dennis, and we thought we were on the right track with this pivoting, and if they can produce the pivot or not, that dictates future funding. I'm fine with the motion. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. It was my understanding from Anisa's one-on-ones with you that we had support for this. That's why we brought it back today. The motion, I think, that you're making, Chairman, cleans it up for, for staff. I know I'm more clear now, so I think Lindsay would be too, and we will be glad to bring that back to you.
Okay.
I don't know who goes first. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I don't have a problem with the motion, the latest substitute motion on the wind down, as long as the focus, and we may have to add this to your motion, is on workforce, childcare, and nonprofits that are directly related to COVID, nothing beyond those things.
And that is, that has already, that message has already been delivered, that's already in the works. So I don't believe that that has to be a part of the motion because staff has already communicated that based on the consensus from commissioners.
So would you be willing to amend your motion to?
I don't really understand that part that you're upset with, so.
You're not willing to amend your motion to say that we focus on the things that she said we would focus on?
I think it's assumed that that's what the focus is.
It is, but if it, if it makes, if that's what's necessary, I'm fine with that being in the motion.
Okay.
But I want to make sure that that's what the motion is.
I can't articulate, I can't articulate what your anxiety is with what you just said.
You, you can't say that it has to be part of workforce, childcare, and nonprofits that are directly related to COVID? That's what she raised at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, I have to add to the amended motion. Tell me again what I'm supposed to add? In words? Because you've got it written down. I don't have it written down.
That we want Recovery Connect to focus only on workforce, childcare, and nonprofits that are related to COVID.
Okay.
Recovery.
Madam Clerk, could you add that language to the amended motion, please? Is there a second to that part?
I will, I will second.
And Commissioner Lopez, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm trying to understand all of this as we're going. The motion as it is now, is that any different than the original motion? Because now we're focusing on the same things that we wanted to originally. So what is different between us passing this, even with a six-week delay or not? I, I'm, I want to make sure I understand this because I, I don't see a significant difference here now.
If I can, what, I, I will articulate what I understand because I think as the staff who are going to implement this, it's important that I'm repeating back to you what I think is happening. So my understanding is that in lieu of coming back in six weeks, we will come back at the next quarterly report. At that time, we will deliver to you either a contract that is winding the program down or we will have measures to justify continuing the program with a focus on only workforce, childcare, or nonprofits that were impacted specifically based on COVID-19. So I think, I think the wind down is a little different, and I think the quarterly report is different than what the earlier motion was.
So kind of a combination of the other two.
Yes, we're compromising.
Okay, yes, I understand. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was fully understanding where we were. Thank you.
Okay. Lindsay, you, you summarized the motion for the record nicely.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks, Commissioner Lopez, for your question about it. Okay, there's a, the substitute motion and a second by Commissioner Beatty. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner How?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. And with that, thank you, Lindsay. And with that, it is 11:17. Let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back at 11:27? Okay.
Sorry. I hate bugs.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Let's just call it 11:30. We'll be back 11:30.
Sounds good.
All right, are we ready to get back started?
Yes, yes, Sarah's got a.
I'm on here.
A short departure.
Hello, Commissioner.
Okay.
Okay, stand by. I'm going to count you guys down.
I'll wait for the signal.
Okay, I'm going to give you a ten count and I'm going to go silent at five, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ten, nine, eight, seven, six. One.
Okay, thank you, we are back, sorry, apologize if we were a couple of minutes after eleven thirty, but we have returned to the commission meeting. Commissioner Lopez is joining us by Zoom for a little while. With that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item O, Presentation of the Quarterly Financial Report.
Okay, Lindsey, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners, Lindsey Prossow, your CFO. Told you you would get sick of me today. So I am filling in for Brent on this quarterly financial report as he handles some family obligations. So probably won't be quite as impressive as what he normally does, but we'll try and get through it together. That's my hint to you to not ask a ton of questions. So I want to first thank the teams in accounting and budget. They assemble this lovely report that you receive at the end of each quarter. After it is presented to you today, we will publish this on the website so that it is generally available to the public. So just to reiterate what's in this.
And Lindsey, just for, just let me interrupt this for the public. This is the quarterly for the ending, the third quarter.
First quarter, first three months of twenty twenty-three. Yes, so this goes through March thirty-one. And so we will go through this presentation and we will compare the first quarter of twenty twenty-three to the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. All of that information is contained in this lovely report. It is a lot of work. I do encourage if you have questions to go through this. Just there's a general summary at the beginning. There is a deep dive into the general fund. When we talk about forty-six departments that live in the general fund, here are your forty-six departments. It is defined in this tab. All of the other key accounts, including ARPA, the Arena Fund, all of those are then have their own pages. Later in this document behind budgetary accounts, we go into all of the capital projects that are open and active, their status when we expect them to be completed. And then the final section are all of the fund statements. It wouldn't, I would be in big trouble if I didn't remind you that none of this information for twenty twenty-three is audited yet. So we are presenting it to you in good faith, but recognize that future adjustments could be made. And we will get this post, like I said, posted online, the report itself, after we finish today. So the first slide we always start off with is a little bit of a dive into the financial forecast. Now, what you see today is what's included in this binder, and it only focuses on twenty twenty-three. But tomorrow, we will kick off your B O C C budget hearings, and we will spend more time looking at the life of the forecast. And so that will include your twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight cycles. And you will hear, you'll start hearing about all the twenty twenty-four budget requests. So this is just a good backdrop for you to have as we go into those budget deliberations. So what I want to quickly talk about is the County General Fund. So you may recall that as we went through budget adoption, we talked about having a healthy surplus projected in the County General Fund in twenty twenty-three, but that is largely due to one-time revenues that we either have received or anticipate receiving later this year. That includes the opioid settlement funds and includes bringing in the fund balances from those consolidated funds. So if you recall, we removed, or we moved EMS, Comcare Tax Fund, and Noxious Weeds into the general fund in twenty twenty-two. When we did that, the audit hadn't been done, we didn't know what the exact financials were. So we had to then wait a year to move all of those funds into the general fund. They are not available for general use, just like we talked about with M A B C D a couple of weeks ago. These funds may only be used for the purpose in which they were accumulated. So what you'll see here is a very healthy fund balance that we expect ending the year with, but more than ten million dollars of that will be restricted for very specific uses that we cannot use for other. If we take out those one-time revenues, we actually expect to have a very modest surplus of one point four million in the general fund at year-end. And we'll get into why we expect that as we move through the presentation. You'll see that in bond and interest, we continue to try to build that fund balance up to about five million dollars to ensure that we always have adequate cash to make good on our debt payments. Other property tax-supported funds, this is just exactly what we talked about in the general fund. It's revenue there, it's an expense on this side. So you'll see a large operating deficit there as we move that cash out. If we look at non-property tax-supported funds, that's an even scarier deficit that you see. But our ARPA presentation has a great timing because we received a hundred million dollars across twenty-one and twenty-two. We will now spin that down from twenty-three through twenty-six. So we continue to expect to have some pretty significant deficits in those funds. If we look at FIRE, you can see that we do expect a relatively healthy deficit. But again, timing, we just talked about the two million dollars that's being moved out of the FIRE district and paid off for the station relocation remodel. So if we didn't consider that as a part of this, we actually would have a healthy operating surplus. Then as we look at our enterprise and internal service funds, we do expect a deficit here. We are projecting continued high fuel costs in our fleet fund, which is an internal service fund. Other internal service funds include the Arena, or I'm sorry, that's an enterprise fund. Other internal service funds include our health and life insurance, risk management, workers' compensation. But all of those we expect to be pretty well in line with their budgets. So overall, for the operations of the county on a budgetary basis, we anticipate having about a twenty-five million dollar operating deficit this year. Again, not all deficits are bad. We are spending down the cash that we received for ARPA, that's almost the entirety of this slide. So as we move into county property tax-supported funds, just a reminder that we have five. Those five are reflected in these figures. That's the county's general fund, the WSU one point five mills, aging, highways, and bond and interest. So only three of those funds actually have personnel costs, general fund, aging, and highways, and we will get into that here in a moment. So this slide takes the first quarter revenues in our county property tax-supported funds, and it does a look back for five years. And so you can see exactly what we've been talking about, continued modest, steady growth in revenues. In your monthly financial report, we go into great detail about what drives much of this. For us this year, we had an increase of seven point three in assessed valuation. And so so far, that has yielded six point three million dollars more in property taxes. We also continue to see incredible strength in retail sales and use taxes, which we do not plan for. That is surprising to us, that has been up seven percent for the first quarter compared to the first quarter of twenty-two. And keep in mind that in the first quarter of twenty-two versus twenty twenty-one, we were up ten percent. So to continue to have this strong growth in excess of what inflation even is, is really a remarkable story about how our community is faring. We also have included in this the one point one million dollars in opioid funds that were received. Those will be moved out later this year into its own fund. And then also something we'll talk about later in this presentation, but on Sunday, Hope sent you your quarterly investment report. And I hope that you saw that we have in the first quarter of this year received two point four million dollars in investment income. That's more than six times what we received in the same quarter last year. We have excellent investment portfolio management in our accounting department, but we also are seeing what's happening with the Federal Reserve effects on interest rates. I fully expect today that we'll see that interest rates are up again, good or bad, depending on your perspective. Now, in terms of expenditures, we're going to look at two slides here. And the second slide is probably going to drop off soon. So what this slide shows is the amount of expenditures that we have had in our county property tax-supported funds through just the first quarter. Now, when we say expenditures, it's not necessarily that money has gone out the door. It's also that we have entered a contract and we set aside the budget in our system in order to pay out that contract over the course of a year. So a lot of what you'll see in the variation is departments getting used to that. However, it's also because we have seen a lot of activity with COVID. So if this slide that you're, that you see now, which is the second expenditure slide in your packet, shows our property tax fund expenses if we back out COVID. If you remember at the beginning of twenty twenty-one, before we knew ARPA was coming, we were able to use general fund cash to pay for COVID nineteen expenses. So when you take that out, we're a lot more level until we get to this year. And that's where I talked about committing more of our budget for contracts that we expect to pay inmate medical, inmate meals, vehicles, those kinds of things. That's where a lot of this happens. We haven't necessarily spent more money, we have obligated more money in our system. So let's look at some of these specifics. Now, one thing that I think we have gotten tripped up on in the past when we look at this, these are our top ten key revenues. But a new footnote that we've added to this is that in these funds, there are more than one hundred forty individual types of revenue that come in. So we're only looking at ten here. And that's why when you see all revenues for this quarter equal one hundred thirty-four point six million, that all of the numbers up above don't add to that, that's why, because there are a hundred thirty other types of revenues that are being collected here. So when we talk about some of the great swings, you can see we've already talked about the investment income. That's, again, great portfolio management, but also high interest rates, motor vehicle taxes. This is also a really reassuring figure to me. We are hearing from the treasurer's office that there are more transactions and that those transactions are worth more, more dollars. And so with COVID and autos, vehicles being very hard to come by, new vehicles especially, that was kind of a troubling statistic that we saw for a couple of years. This shows, in my opinion, a rebound from that as the supply chain loosens up, so that's good news. You will also see on administrative reimbursement, a very large increase. Again, that's a function of those consolidated funds, paying what they owe to the general fund as we close out those funds. Another big one to look at is officer fees. So it's kind of a misleading title for what these really are. This is the per-page filing fee that is received in the Register of Deeds. And so this, again, is a function of those rising interest rates and driving down that fervor in the housing and commercial markets. We are seeing fewer transactions, fewer mortgages being filed, even though those dollars still considered are considerably up compared to what they used to be. So that's why you'll see a large percentage, but not necessarily a tremendous change in dollars. So then, as we move to personnel, a question that always comes up is how much of the county budget actually goes to people cost? So for this calendar year, we have a budget that is roughly fifty-two percent personnel. However, if we look at twenty twenty-two actuals, forty-nine percent of the budget went to people cost. And what I think is really interesting about that is only seventy percent of that cost actually went to earnings. The rest was all of the costs that we have to pay on top of that for payroll taxes. You know, we pay roughly twenty, twenty, or I'm sorry, twenty-two percent on every dollar we pay for somebody who's in the K P N F system. And so as we continue to see FIRE, Sheriff, and EMS, who are those folks in the K P N F plan, as we continue to grow dollars for the wages, we will continue to see increases just in those costs, which is thirty percent. That plus our health insurance is thirty percent of our total personnel costs. So you may think, why are costs down? We just invested a bunch in compensation. And if you read your quarterly report or your monthly financial report, you'll know it's because we had one fewer pay period through twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-two. So this is somewhat of a misleading slide because it's not that our personnel costs are really down. It's just we have a difference in how we've posted that. So to put that in context, I'm going to give you big, the big total county organization, not just county property tax funds. Our second pay period in February twenty twenty-two, the value of that was eight point one million dollars, one pay period. The value of that same pay period in twenty twenty-three is eight point nine million. So that is where the effect of your adjustments to earnings can be seen because we don't really have that many more employees. For the same pay period, last year, we paid two thousand six hundred seventy-five people. This year, we've paid two thousand six hundred eighty-two people in that same timeframe. So it really is, yep, so it really is just earnings that are driving those increases. So it's going to take us until the third quarter to catch up in terms of getting the same number of payroll periods. Plus, it's always going to look weird because last year we had twenty-seven payroll postings. It happens once every eleven years. So our numbers are going to continue to look a little odd here, but we'll continue to provide that supplemental information. So if we look at other non-personnel expenses in our county property tax-supported funds, medical professional services, again, I talked about shopping carts before, we set aside the amount of funds we actually expect to spend for the year as opposed to just paying out the bills. That is reflected in this line, we have more shopping carts, setting aside how much we actually think we'll pay for the course of the year. It's not just that all of a sudden magically our inmates are costing us another four point eight million dollars in the first quarter of the year. It is, we are setting aside those dollars. And so we'll see a few more fluctuations on that. You can also see our fleet management charges, as we talked about before, we continue to expect fuel costs to go up. So those costs continue to be assessed back against departments. Those are kind of the major outliers on this slide. If you need more detail, I would encourage you to review the quarterly report, there's lots of great information in there. So we are going to shift gears now and move to the FIRE District General Fund. So this is a much briefer presentation. When we look at these revenues, you can see that as their assessed value continues to grow, and that is their primary source of revenue, we continue to see revenues we're collecting through the first quarter go up. So and, and for twenty twenty-two, there was a five point six percent. So and and for 2022, there was a 5.6% increase in assessed value. So we expect that to be essentially how it nets out by the end of the year for the revenues. For expenditures, pretty stable over the last five years. As you all know, we are making efforts to change that cycle and make it more like the rest of the county. Other than that, they have spent a little more on equipment so far through the first quarter. That's just a timing issue. And overall, their budget looks pretty good, as you saw on that very first slide where we talked about their anticipated year-end fund balance. Now we shift to the county's non-property tax supported funds. There are more than 30 of these that are operating funds. So it includes all of our grants, solid waste fund, auto license fund, our, pretty much anything you can think of that we haven't already talked about is grouped in here. And what we see because of the nature of these funds is volatility in the amount of revenue and volatility in the amount of expense. So when we look at this increase here, this is actually really great news. We are seeing the effects of the CC BHC funding model that Comcare moved to. Those dollars are coming in at a, at the high rate that we expected, and that's great news. They're actually up $2 million through the first quarter. It is fantastic news. So that is a large driver of the difference here, as well as just the timing on when we receive our grant funds. When we look at expenditures for these funds, it's the same type of thing unlike the rest of the county because Comcare's pay adjustments were were significantly more than what we saw and because they were funded with this extra revenue. And because they're actually able to get people in the door, their personal expenses are actually up first quarter 2023 versus first quarter '22. And we'll look at that here in a moment. Now, if we back out cares or ARPA, this is what that revenue looks like. So you can still, it's still a pretty, see, it's still a pretty dramatic swing thanks to those Comcare revenues that are coming in. But our expenses are going to continue to increase when we back out COVID because of that, because we also have the expense side. The way this model works is there's actually incentive to spend more because the model gets revised and it's based on how much they actually pay out for these services. That's how they get reimbursed. So we'll continue to expect to see those figures increase. Now, again, in this grouping of funds, we have more than 120 revenue types in our non-tax funds. So this table, again, only lists the top 10. Now, you'll look at the PPS1 Medicaid fees and see a tremendous dollar change. And then you'll come down and look at Medicaid fees and see another tremendous dollar change, but on the flip side. Medicaid fees are are not going to be the same in Comcare as what they used to be. These Medicaid fees will be what we see in health department, aging. The PPS1 Medicaid fees is where we'll see Medicaid dollars under this new funding model related to Comcare. And so this Medicaid fee number, this is going to become the new normal for the Medicaid fees, but this PPS1 Medicaid fees will continue to increase associated with Comcare. So that's actually a very positive variance when you put those two together. Now, when we look at our state revenues for KDADs and for corrections, what you'll see is some pretty good increases in those. And so, again, that's positive news as we continue to see increased funding for a state contract for CDDO, for the KDADs, for corrections. They gave us increased funding associated with wages. If you remember, that was part of why they were able to have a new pay plan last year. On the flip side, we'll see that our federal revenues are not growing as much or decreasing. We are receiving less funding for meals on wheels, a lot of that tied to COVID. There's also less JAG reimbursement so far this year, but that varies from year to year. And then motor vehicles fees, same thing we talked about before, there's more activity happening. So those are some good variances that we can see here. When we look at some of the key expenses in county non-property tax supported funds, I mentioned that Comcare is actually seeing an increase in wages paid out, even though we have one fewer pay period. That's what's driving that salaries and wage line is because we have more, way more people in positions than we had through the first quarter of last year, and they're earning more. Facility improvements and facility lease rentals, that's 100% tied to ARPA. So the facility lease or the facility improvements are the work that's being done at the courthouse to remodel that into courts, which, again, Veterans Court, today, we heard about that. That'll make some space for that. Facility lease rental, that's the roughen lease that's being paid out for county admin folks. So that's all ARPA. And then contracted meals are up. This is for aging meals on wheels and congregate meals. This is also because of what we talked about, where we obligate funds at the beginning of the year, and then we start to spin them down. So everything I've presented to you thus far has been on what we call a budgetary basis. And so that means when we do make a commitment in the budget, we report that as an expense. We're shifting away from that model into GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. This is far more like what businesses are used to seeing. Now, this is always an interesting slide to look at. This is the fund balance on the GAAP basis. Now, when we talk about GAAP basis, we're not just talking cash in, cash out like the budget. We're talking about assets and inventories and liabilities and all of those things. So that's what this depicts. So the red labels are quarter one fund balances in the general fund. Obviously, we always collect property taxes in Jan, well, we get our distribution in January, and we'll get a distribution in June. So we always have large fund balances at the beginning of the year, and then we spin that down as we go through the year because we only get those two distributions. But what you can see is that those figures continue to increase. Now, remember, we have consolidated a number of activities into the general fund, and so our general fund budget has grown. For 2023, our general fund budget is 284.6 million. Our county fund balance policy that you all are lauded for in every credit rating agency rating I've ever seen is the 20% minimum of that budget. That 20% minimum equates to $56.9 million. So what you'll see is at the end of 2022, unaudited figures right now, we had fund balance of 88 million. Now, remember, we talked about MABCD. We talked about some of those other funds. So you can't just take this as 88 million minus 57 million and have our available fund balance. Hope will present that to you next month in your audit report, and you will see how of that breaks down between our restricted balances, our spendable fund balances and our available fund balances. But this generally tells you, the point I want to make on this is this generally tells you, we are well positioned to withstand some of the changes that are coming our way, most likely through legislative changes to our revenue streams, so that we can have deliberate, thoughtful conversations about how to handle that through a budget process. Now, the investment portfolio, again, this is one of the nuttier slides. I don't know if that's a fair term to say when you're talking about finances, but I'm saying it.
Is that an accounting term?
Technical, yes, highly technical. Okay, thank you for the humor. Now everybody's awake again. So our investment portfolio, this is actually a very sad slide through 2020, for 2020 and 2021. If you look at the yields, if you look at the benchmarks, it's just a very sad slide. But then, if you get to the first quarter of 2023, what I would like to point out is the benchmark, which is the one-year treasury bill, is 4.85%. Our yield through the first quarter was only 1.8%. This shows you how rapidly the feds have been changing the rates. And because we, as a government, have very conservative practices and must have very conservative practices, as you've seen in the investment policy you've approved, it's going to take us a while to catch up there. But it makes it even more remarkable, in my opinion, that we received $2.4 million in investment income through the first quarter of the year. I don't know that that's something we can count on forever, especially as we start spending fund balance on projects, but certainly it is something that's favorable to us right now. We always talk about some of the significant capital projects. As you will see in your quarterly financial report, there are pages and pages of capital projects that are happening in this county. But some of the ones that we have talked a lot about are listed here. So the bell display at the main courthouse is something that is underway. Once it starts, it will, construction will take about 60 days. So we are expecting to see that completed later this summer. Obviously, the emergency communications remodel is a big deal. I saw it in many of your newsletters last week. So that project has been awarded, obviously. It's under construction, and they anticipate that this also will be done later this summer in August. If we move to bridge projects, you can see that most of these are either completed or will be, actually, they're all completed. The B496 actually just opened last week. So these projects are coming in well under budget, and they're making some good progress on these. So good news on that front. So I've talked at you for a long time now. What should you know? What would be the takeaways from this conversation? Our county fiscal condition is sound. We have had very good decisions and very good luck with some of the revenues in terms of investment income and retail sales and use taxes. So that's going to give us a little more flexibility than we thought we might have as we go into the 2024 budget development process. There are a lot of pressures, though, outside of the county's control. Just mentioned the Federal Reserve is making a decision today. They're anticipated to do another rate increase. Well, there are lots of folks out there saying that's going to put more pressure on the banking sectors, and that could push us closer to a recession. That will have impact on us, but that's typically a year or two out before we really feel it here in Kansas. So that's something that we're going to have to keep a really close eye on. Of course, the national labor market, it's not just us that are having workforce challenges. And we just heard the governor a week or two ago make a statement that for every Kansan there, who is looking for a job, there are two jobs available. And so we know that workforce is going to continue to be a challenge for us and for our community. We know that there are still supply chain issues in parts of our organization. We've all heard the horror stories about how long it's taking to get ambulances or dump trucks when we put in orders, and how that will eventually impact business is yet to be determined. And of course, we know that federal and state legislative actions will have impact on us. We've heard a lot about legislative session updates, changes to maybe even the state constitution about assessed value that will impact our ability to do business. And then, of course, the county itself has budget challenges, and we need to, as as we just spoke about, continue to be strategic about how we use ARPA to position us long term. I think a good example of that is the cameras in the jail. We know that our community continues to demand service and even more service than we're able to provide today. But we also know our community demands that we be fiscally responsible. And so trying to manage expectations on the fiscal side as well as the performance side is going to be a challenge going forward for us. Like I said, we know the county has workforce challenges. We know that technology continues to be something that we're trying to move toward, but that comes with its own cost. And then, of course, we are always talking about our continued needs for space and changing workforce and changing needs there. So I've talked a lot. I sort of apologize, but I think this is good stuff for us to talk through as we go into budget development. I'm happy to answer questions. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file this report.
Thank you. That's, it's a required review that we need to do every quarter. So thank you very much.
Yes, by policy, you have to hear this, whether you like it or not.
Commissioner Beatty.
Just thank you, Chairman. Just a comment of thanks. Appreciate all you guys are doing. This is the monthly reviews, the quarterly reviews. I can only imagine the amount of workload it takes to do this and to see that we are in good position in many regards and hopeful in many regards. I just appreciate all the work that goes into these things. I read them, I actually enjoy them and appreciate it. One question, simply, a lot of variances, and there's some signs for, on the revenue side of things, that are really encouraging. Do you change, have you changed or given consideration to budget deficits? And what does it look like? And what are your projections?
You are going to segue beautifully into our conversation tomorrow. Yes, you will see a much improved forecast tomorrow.
I'll wait patiently.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I haven't finished that PowerPoint yet.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Although Lorian's doing 99% of the work on that.
Very good. Thank you.
Lindsay, I was going to ask, but you covered it. There is a, we're all learning the recent adjustment in fee payments to Comcare through the Medicaid. I don't think we even knew exactly what was going to be the outcome, but now we have a track record of maybe three quarters to start last summer, maybe?
I think we really actually started seeing the new money show up in the final quarter of last year because there is, there is a lag in the timing of when we can get it billed and when they can get us paid.
So we're still kind of watching that for a pattern.
But all signs are positive.
Right. But it has had a positive impact, which is what we're all hoping. A little bit in the weeds on that stuff, but but it is of concern, encouraging concern as we accepted that that new model, that payment model. Thank you for addressing that in your presentation. Commissioner Hale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a couple of quick questions. Thanks for the presentation. I agree with Commissioner Beatty. This is one of the more important things I think we have to do is look at the numbers. And so I always love it when you make a presentation on our status. So and thank you to all your staff that helps make this happen.
I will pass that along. Thank you.
You mentioned a $2.4 million investment income. Is that the total or is that above what we normally would get?
No, that's the total we received in the first quarter. And so I don't know that we have it in this presentation. I'll send you a table. It is really, it has been years, maybe even a decade, since we've seen this kind of investment income in a quarter.
And again, I don't know how liquid we are, but it sounds to me like they've had to make some changes to capture those higher interest rates. They've obviously had to do that. Relevant to the rate of inflation, how are we doing compared to the CPI? Again, if we have a chunk of money sitting out there, are we not earning, not earning interest and we're losing money, obviously? How are we compared to the CPI rates? Are we, are we keeping up with it? Are we actually gaining? Is there more revenue coming in above CPI? I think that's what you're saying here.
We are. Through the first quarter, yes, we have received stronger revenues than the CPI, and our folks are diligent. And actually, we may be coming to you with a tool to help us be even better about how we manage how much cash we actually have sitting and making sure that we don't have idle cash, making sure that we are taking advantage of every opportunity. So you can see our yield, so how much we actually brought in was, we're only at the 1 point, is that 1.8? Yeah. So the 1.8% mark, obviously, if we look at inflation or even the treasury kind of standard that we aim for, we're not there. You can see historically, we have always been there. They're just getting so far ahead of us. A lot of our, our cashes and investment that we can just take out overnight, obviously, the longer we can invest it, the better chance of having a higher return we get. But their, our, our team is strategically looking at that. I would tell you every day to try and make sure that as new money is coming in, we're getting invested. So are we keeping up with CPI? No. I would tell you, we're not necessarily built to do that either, though, as a government because they want us to be cautious. Does that answer the right question?
Yeah, you did great. And then that portfolio, is that, is that, what portion of our ending balances in that portfolio? Is it most of it or?
If, if we were to just look at our ending balance, it exceeds that is what we have invested. We typically have, I would say, at a, at a really good time, 200 to 230 million invested. But we also have to be able to pay our balances. We have to be able to make tax distributions. When all that cash comes into the county, we make sure, we have to have the cash on hand. We're not just investing that cash and tying it up. So it just depends on where we are in the year and what we have going on as to how much is actually sitting in that portfolio.
Okay. And so that's, just for clarification, that slide, the yield and the benchmark and the portfolio are all a first quarter 2023 number?
So no, if you, if you look here, so here's the March of 2018 figure, first quarter, second quarter 2018, third quarter 2018, where we ended 2018. So this ties to a particular quarter. We want to give you a longer range spread.
Right, okay. And then my only other question I had was, just you, you said it, but I must have missed it. Can you, on slide number nine, the medical professional services jumped up 140%. What, what was the cause of that again?
So So when you look at our monthly or quarterly reports, we will talk about something called a shopping cart. And so our system is built so that when we enter into, let's say, an annual contract for service, we can anticipate how much we're going to spend in the course of a year. And our system allows us to go in and basically put in a purchase order for that. And so we were able to say, we plan to spend 5.95 million dollars on inmate medical services at least through the course of this year. That's just our base rate. So the system allows us to go in and tie up or encumber those funds. That counts as an actual, on a budgetary basis, we consider that an expense because we've tied up the budget. But what will happen is every month we'll get a bill for those services and it will hit against that 5.95 million that has been set aside. And then toward the end of the year, if we need to increase it, we can go in and increase that amount. Or if we're not going to spend that much, they're able to go in and actually release those funds so that it can be used for something else. So it's just encumbering, it's a timing issue and a budget management issue.
Well, I have to tell you that our finances have been worrisome lately and I think this makes me feel a lot better. This is a pretty good report.
Thank you.
That's all I got. Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, that mouth is really distracting.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll make a motion to receive and file. Motion in a second. No comments pending. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howell, Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item P, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on April 27, 2023, and Item Four from the Regular Meeting on April 13, 2023.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. As was mentioned, we have two sets of recommendations for your approval. The first one comes from our regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts that occurred on April 13. This recommendation was to extend the original contract term for organizational inclusion consulting services with Hicks, Carter Hicks LLC. This is for an additional period of 10 months. That would go from February 17, 2023 through December 17, 2023. And it covers items nine through 11, and that's in the amount of $56,000 plus the travel expenses. Now we move to the regular Board of Bids and Contracts meeting of April 27. And we have six items. The first is the 2023 BM overlays for Public Works. That recommendation is to accept the low bid from APAC Kansas Incorporated Shears Division in the amount of $1,081,379.25. Item number two is smart file for Prazer's Office. Recommendation is to accept the bid from Tyler Technologies Incorporated, and this is a total contract amount of $128,060. Item number three, on-call electrical services, facilities maintenance. The recommendation is to accept the bids from the responding vendors as listed, and this is for a contract period of three years with two one-year options to renew. Next item, Item Four, Banking Services for Division of Finance. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from InTrust Bank NA and establish contract pricing at the rates listed, and that's for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number five, seven each of the marked Police Package Dodge Chargers for Fleet Management and Sheriff's Office. And this recommendation is to accept the bid from CDJ Automotive LLC, doing business as Main Street of Lansing, in the amount of $262,500. And our final item, Item Six, is for three each of the marked Police Package SUVs for Fleet Management Sheriff's Office. And this recommendation is to accept the bid from Parks Motors, and that's in the amount of $133,245. I recommend approval of both sets of items and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't actually have any questions, but I'd like to split this up and so I can vote differently on one item. So I make a motion, we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts for everything on Item P, with the exception of Item Four from the Regular Meeting of April 13, 2023.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion in a second. Any questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howell, Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I make a motion, we'd approve the Item Number Four from the meeting on April 13, 2023.
I'll second that. Any other questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howell,
No.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Joe, thanks again and thanks for being around. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items Q through double letter A, B this morning.
Okay. And for clarification, we don't need to pull it, but Item U, just it's pointed out that we have a sample of that letter of support and I just want to confirm when we do it that I think it's valuable to have all five commissioners sign.
Very good, sir. Lisa and Carol have crafted a letter for the Clerk's Office and is it, does it contain all five signatures?
Yes.
We're good to go.
Okay. That was just clarification. Any other questions about any of the consent items? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve consent items Q through A, B.
Second.
Motion in a second. No other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howell, Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, we do need to sometime go to the Fire District. Want to go now or do we want to go to the legislative agenda? We can, let's go, let's, let's recess from the regular meeting or call the meeting to order of the Fire District, number one. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howell, Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Anybody from the public want to address the Commission on the Fire District, one? I don't see any, so we'll move to the next item.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of March 22, 2023.
Okay, Commissioners, you've had a chance to review. If it's all right with you, we'll combine A and B, which is the fire minutes, fire meeting minutes of March 22 and April 5 of '23. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Being no questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howell, Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stolz again, County Manager's Office. Lindsay referenced these during General Meeting. We're asking for approval of consent items C and D.
Okay. Commissioners, you recall that we did have a presentation on this earlier today. If there's any other questions, I don't see any, I will make a motion to approve consent items C and D. Motion in a second. Being no questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howell, Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Does the Commission have any, anything under other to cover with the Fire District? I don't see any and we don't have an executive session for the Fire District. So we will adjourn the Fire District meeting and will return to the General Board of County Commission meeting. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Okay. Tanya, welcome to the meeting.
Morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. For legislative updates, I do have a few items that I wanted to go over. So the 2023 legislative session came to an end, as you know, last Friday evening after both chambers adopted a resolution to adjourn, sign, e, die. As far as significant updates, as far as things that we've discussed, assessed valuations, we discussed that where there was going to be no more than 4% with an exception of new construction. That was not taken up, but we do expect that that will be taken up next year. So if that does pass, we do, we have heard that it would be taken up in a vote in the general election of 2024. So just for your awareness. Senate Bill Eight, I sent you a note on that. That did pass, which included Senate Bill 252, which is the Government Competition Bill with Private Business. However, we do know that neither chamber had enough votes to do a veto override and we do believe that the Governor will veto that bill. The Conference Committee report for House Bill 2285 that passed on Friday, that would require the Secretary of Health and Environment to study overdose deaths and maintain the confidentiality of records used by the Secretary in the study. The bill would restrict the duties and authority of the Secretary and local health officers regarding infectious and contagious diseases. The bill also included language that law enforcement officers did not have a duty to enforce related to health issues. It also had language to include limiting gathering limits. It would define the COVID-19 vaccine and prohibit the Secretary from requiring such vaccines for any child cared for in a childcare facility, excuse me, any student enrolling or enrolled in a school for the first time, any child enrolling or enrolled for the first time in a preschool or daycare program operated by a school, and any other such students as may be designated by the Secretary prior to admission or attendance at school. So the vote was close in both chambers, passing in the House and in the Senate, but wanted to let you know that it's likely to be vetoed by the Governor. House Bill 2021, that's a juvenile justice bill. I want to save that towards the end because I know that Commissioner Howell has a lot of discussion on that piece. As far as veto overrides, we talked a lot about Senate Bill 169. That is providing an income tax rate, that flat tax of 5.15% for individuals. What we talked about a lot was establishing the 0% state rate for sales and use tax for food and food ingredients beginning on January 1 of 2024. That was overridden in the House, 85 to 38. However, the override failed in the Senate twice, so that failed override. Senate Bill 209, that was requiring all advanced voting ballots to be returned by 7:00 PM on Election Day. The Governor vetoed that bill, however, that override failed in the Senate, 25 to 15. Good news for the county, Senate Bill 228. That requires the Secretary of KDads to reimburse counties for certain costs when a person is in county jail, waiting examination, evaluation, or treatment for competency at $100 per day, per person. If you recall, we talked about that some time back. That was overridden in the House and in the Senate. So that is good news for Sedgwick County and the sheriff is aware of that bill as well. I wanted to comment on this. This is something that we had on the joint platform, House Bill 2344. This is Senate substitute, again, for House Bill 2344 by the Committee on Commerce. So this establishes childcare licensing requirements relating to license capacity and staff to child ratios, eliminating certain license fees and training requirements, creating a process for daycare facility licenses to apply for a temporary waiver of certain statutory requirements and authorizing the Secretary to develop and operate pilot programs to increase childcare facility availability or capacity. So this had a lot to do with the childcare ratio. However, this override failed in the House. So those are my updates that I have for you and be glad to answer any questions. But I would like to turn this over to Commissioner Howell because I do know that he wants to talk about House Bill 2021, which is the juvenile justice bill.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you did a great job providing a summary for the session. House Bill 2021 is a bill that refers to something that was on our legislative platform dealing with juvenile justice and corrections in the state of Kansas. It goes back to a historic bill in 2017, Senate Bill 367. It was a total rewrite of the Juvenile Justice Corrections Laws for our state. And what this bill did was it returned some of the provisions back to prosecutors and judges and corrections programs so that we would have some tools in the toolbox to help some of these kids that need a little extra help. It was not intended to return us back to where we were, but this bill was very, it was surprisingly controversial. I was surprised how difficult this bill was, but this bill did fail entirely. It went down, it went down in flames in the Senate towards the end of the session, but I was surprised to find out that they continue to work the bill. And on Wednesday, just before they adjourned, they did a motion to reconsider and it passed the Senate with a support of 22 to 16. And that was a great surprise. I was actually there to watch the debate. That's a little thin margin and I'm a little concerned about the bill. In fact, I was told by some folks that you might need to provide some encouragement to get this bill and get a signature from the Governor. The bill went from there to the House on Friday. Right before they adjourned, they took this bill up and it passed with almost unanimous support. It was 119.1. So you would think with that type of, the bipartisan support in the House, this bill would pass, but there are some concerns about some of the folks in the Senate and maybe their relationship with the Governor, that this bill might actually get a veto. So we are concerned. Just for the record, our district attorney did testify in favor of the bill during the testimony before the committee. We have an email out to our sheriff. He is supportive of us encouraging the Governor. He still thinks this is a good bill. I've talked to our, some of our juvenile justice judges here in Sedgwick County. They're in favor of this bill. Talked to our Corrections Department. They seem to be in favor of this bill. This is an important bill to Sedgwick County. It'll help some of our juvenile, juvenile criminogenic kids get the programming that they need. I'll just say this, the bill is not what it started out to be. There's one piece in the bill that was added in from House Bill 2033 that deals with the definitions of who can receive services. It says the Juvenile Health Intervention Center definition was changed from mental health to behavioral health. And the idea of that is there's a lot of kids that may not necessarily be diagnosed with mental health, but they have behavioral health issues that can now access programming as a consequence of that Senate Bill, I'm sorry, House Bill 233 being included into this 2021. Besides that, there are still six provisions. I don't know if we can still, can we post this letter somewhere where the public can read this? I've had a lot of questions without reading this lengthy letter. It's longer than I would like, but it does explain the background as to why we're talking about this today. And I have summarized what's left in the bill. There are six provisions that came from 2021 that are still in this bill. They're watered down somewhat, but they're still steps in the right direction. So we still think this bill has a lot of, a lot of good things in it and we would love to see the Governor sign this bill. I would like to celebrate as a county, we did move a piece of legislation forward that is going to help our kids. And I think that's really, for, I don't know about my colleagues, but I've been focused on this issue for more than three years now. And to me, to have, to have this in front of us, waiting the Governor's signature is a pivotal point. And I don't want to see us lose it at this point. So I'm asking my colleagues, my commissioner friends here, to support a letter to encourage the Governor. She might sign it anyway. We just don't know. And again, it's a little bit unprecedented that we would ask the Governor to sign a bill that had unanimous support, near unanimous support in the House. But because of the Senate, because of the thin margin of approval in the Senate, I am still concerned. And when I think the Governor recognizes the fact that we have shepherded this bill for three years, we actually had our district attorney testify, we had our judges testify, we've had commissioners testify, we've had our Corrections Department testify. To get to this point and then lose this bill because of misunderstandings in the Senate, I think would be tragic. We need the Governor to really understand how important this is to Sedgwick County. With that, I submit this letter for the Commissioners to review. I did send out a draft of this yesterday, had one word, had a one-word error in it. I have it corrected today. And so with that, if there's no concerns about the letter, I would make a motion that the Commission supports this letter of encouragement to the Governor and have this transmitted to her as soon as possible.
Do we need to make a motion for an off-agenda item first? Okay, so.
We do?
No, we do not. So I will second that and I will comment that your letter, the letter as written is pretty good and it, and I would agree the seven, you said six, I think you have seven bullets.
Seven from here and plus one from House 2033. So together, seven.
But it's, it's very good and I'm supportive of us all signing this letter. Any other questions? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We have a motion to approve the signing of the letter supplied to us from Commissioner.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Howell, Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And that's all I have on that and thank you again for the report.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I'm going to bring up one other legislative item that I think is going to be important to us here. Well, it's important to us today, it's going to be important even in the future. And I'm bringing it up under Legislative Items. Mainly, it came out of the KACC meeting that I had last week in Hayes. So quickly touch on some of the things we talked about there and then I'll tell. So quickly touch on some of the things we talked about there, and then I'll tell you why that this is important for legislation. But we did get legislative updates, and they, Jay Hall provided those, and then they go along with the items that Tanya gave us today. Talked about the appraisal process, ECO DVO, coma, but as, as we got the budget and Kansas use tax and so forth, as we got to the end of it, KAC brought up some items that maybe we ought to start thinking about here in the future, and Lindsay is going to be very pleased with this because she tells us about it every year, but we haven't taken action. And I think now is the time that we start taking some action. We need to tell the legislature that they need to do what their job is and fund some of these programs. So what I want to talk about a little bit is the impact of demand transfer losses. So since 2001, cities and counties have lost at least $3,470,603,395 because demand transfers are not happening. And yet, the legislature will say, well, you've got a revenue neutral rate you got to pass. Well, we're going to maybe pass a constitutional amendment to cap assessments and so forth. And they're doing this because the citizens in our counties are concerned about their property tax, and rightfully so, every single one of us. Everybody on this bench is worried about our property tax, and yet, we could reduce our property tax if the legislature would just give us back the money that they promised us when they passed certain statutes. So that's what I want to advocate for us to do on our next legislative agenda, is hold their feet to the fire, saying, yes, we'd be happy to reduce the property tax, and we can do it, just do your job and send it to us. So let me give you a couple of examples. They passed KSA 79-2959 for a local ad valorem property tax reduction. And what they should have done, because they passed that, is they took away funding for us and said, oh, we'll replace it by providing you LAVTRF. But they haven't done it since 2004, was, three was the last time they did that. They also are not funding county-city revenue sharing, which is covered under KSA 79-29-64. And that, not funding that, is $1,352,783,001. They haven't funded the special city-county highway fund. So let me just bring that home to Sedgwick County, what we could have done to reduce property tax in Sedgwick County. This is 2021. Let me find Sedgwick County on here. LAVTRF, we lost $8,806,350. On CCRSF, we lost $15,350,340. Certainly, we could have reduced property tax if we'd had the money that is required by demand transfer. Lindsay briefs it to us each year, but we don't do anything when it comes up time for our legislative agenda. This year, I'm going to keep advocating that we follow through at the legislative agenda time next year and tell the state that if you want to do something for property tax for our citizens, this is how you can do it. They have a huge surplus, and yet, they still are not funding any of these demand transfers that should be going to the county. So I get off my soapbox, but I want to make sure that the commissioners and the citizens that are worried about property tax, that we have a way that we can help reduce the property tax if the state legislature would do their job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for the, taking the time to attend the KAC conference, and those are the kind of things that benefit, obviously you, but benefit us all that come out of that. So thanks for our membership at KAC and our participation for those commissioners that want to go. I have just one quick comment, two quick comments. One is on SCR 1611, the 4% litigation that maybe get caught up, maybe taken up next session. I know that I was privileged to see a written memo from Commissioner Howell explaining that, and I think he did a really, really nice job of explaining that, and I think fortunately, we have time to even relook at that thing and see what kind of message we want to either take individually or collectively to try to help educate the public over the course of this year before next session. But thank you for writing that, taking the time to do that. And the other thing on the child, the last thing on the childcare, we had our, that's really disappointing to, childcare is something we keep hearing about for attracting and all the challenges for childcare, but we heard on the, for some reason, it didn't pass, and I guess one of the testimonies was from a, was from a second-grade teacher that has been teaching first, second grade for, what was it, 20 years, 18, 20 years? And she, and she's starting a childcare business and testified in support of this and, and all the reasons why, to expand childcare from the, whatever currently, four, four people to whatever. And, and they shot her down, or they didn't take her testimony serious, and she's been teaching first and second graders for 18 years, but for some reason, she would not, oh, she was actually rejected on her application for a larger, for a, to open a childcare facility, and her application was rejected for some reason, and that's what she's been doing for 18 years. So there's some really educational problems that we've got to overcome as we're, as we're trying to challenge our community with providing childcare for jobs and all those things that go with it. And so we've got our work cut out for us because we're getting a little handcuffed on helping support advancement of our childcare industry here locally. That's my only two comments. Is there any other under legislative issues? I don't see any, so we will, thank you for the report received and filed. We don't have to have a motion. Okay. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Commissioner Dennis.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
I thought you just gave us a committee report.
Well, now I'm going to talk about, I volunteered to serve with WAMPO on the electric vehicle plan steering committee. And we know that a ton of money is coming down from the federal government because the current administration is very much in favor of things like electric vehicles. So we have to start planning for that now because if we're going to apply for any of that money, and some of it's coming from the federal down through the state over to us, and some of it's coming from the federal straight to us with the possibilities, but we have to look at a lot of issues that are involved in that. And so first of all, one of the main issues is where would you locate them here in Sedgwick County or in the WAMPO region? Because there are really three different types of chargers, and I've asked them to get me smart on what these three different types of chargers do, because I can't tell you, one of them is very low, takes a long time to charge, another one is kind of medium, still takes a long time to charge, but not quite as long, and then you got this real fast chargers. And I think on our arterials or interstates, probably these fast chargers would be the ones that you would want to locate along, along those arterials, but the cost of those is very, very high. Would we want to put some like around government buildings, for example? Well, there's some questions on that, because a lot of people, if you're working here, say, in this building, and you drive an electric vehicle, you probably leave home in the morning with a full charge, and you probably wouldn't need a charger here, and you'd probably be able to make it back home without any problem. So you might think about putting it at sports arenas, for example, because you're going to be there for three or four hours. But again, it'd depend on the type of charger that you'd have there. In addition, if you've, if you're driving, commuting back and forth locally, if you're charging at home, you're probably getting a pretty decent rate on your electric bill for charging, but as you go out and you start using these chargers that are throughout the community, these ones that charge very fast are several hundred thousand dollars to put one of those things in. So they're not going to give you the electric rate on charging those that you're going to get at your house. They're going to charge enough to recover the cost of operating that, that electric charger. So there's a lot of things that go into where and who's going to use it. So we're going to take a look at that. In addition, if we start getting this funding from the state or the federal government, remember, there's a 20% match on any money coming in. So if they want us to participate in this, we've got, it'd probably be 2024, we've got to consider that as we start processing our 2024 budget. And the city of Wichita or any other of the cities would have to think about, would they be willing to fund 20% of the cost of this? So that's some questions that we have. And by the way, I ask, can we use tip funding out of, out of WAMPO? The answer is no, you can't use the tip funding in WAMPO because that's federal government money, and you can't use that to match federal government money. They found on that, so we would have to take that out of our budget if we were going to be participating in that. The other big issue is we're not talking about just the infrastructure to do this. I think it's going to take some funding for the fire department, Fire District Number One, and funding for Wichita Fire Department, because the, the batteries in these electric vehicles can experience thermal runaway. And when one of the cells in there experiences thermal runaway, it heats up the next cell next to it, and it experiences thermal runaway, and it keeps going, and suddenly you got yourself a pretty good fire. The, now, I can't say that it's more dangerous than a, than a gas-powered car. I want to make sure that that's clear. But the difference is, if you have a gas-powered car and you have a fire and you call the fire department, it takes about 1,000 gallons of water to put out a fire on a regular gas-powered car. For a battery-charged car, it takes about 30,000 gallons, and that's if you can even get into the batteries to be able to do that. So you'd have to buy special equipment, and there's a couple of different companies that make equipment. One of them, you're able to take a fire hose and shove it under, and it goes up and it punctures the battery and starts delusing that battery, because you've got to get the temperature down, that's how you get the thermal runaway to stop. So we don't have that equipment, and we don't have our fire department trained to be able to go in and do that. Another type, actually, you add a device on your fire truck, and this other one would require a device on every fire truck also, but that has a very, very high-pressure water spray, high enough that it cuts metal, so that you can cut into the car and into the battery and start delusing that battery with this 30,000 gallons of water. And, and I don't think that, I wish that our fire chief was still here. I don't think we carry 30,000 gallons of water on our fire trucks right now, and we can't hook up to fire hydrants out in the county, so we have to account for that. So what I'm saying is that I think it's going to come, more people are buying those each and every year, so I, I think we need to plan for it for the future, and we need to figure out how much that our investment is going to be in the future. And we only had one meeting so far, and that was yesterday, but all these questions came out of one meeting, and I don't have any answers at this point, but I want everybody to be aware that this is something we're going to be talking about in the future, and it could cost us both in the fire department and in our general fund in order to be able to make sure that we're ready for this, even though a ton of money is going to be coming down from the federal government. So, long story, but there's a lot happening in this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. I don't want to talk about legislative issues too much because that was just the last item, but these things get blurred. And some of the comments that Commissioner Dennis made a minute ago regarding the KCCA annual meeting, I completely agree with what he's saying. Just a point, I would make a point here, when they debated the food sales tax for local government in Topeka, they, the repair bill to that to provide funding, at least temporary funding to local governments, actually would have removed LAVTR from the statutes entirely. It didn't pass, but neither did the elimination of food sales tax on local, for local governments. But that, that issue's probably not dead. I bring this up only because, by the way, Lindsay, you've done a tremendous job, you've given us this briefing numerous times, to the point, I think I memorized everything you said, and in my normal fashion, I added about 1,000 words to it, or 10,000 words to it. And I have been doing what I call a tax talk. And the reason I bring this up is because I have two of these tax talks currently planned. One is for on May 31st, one's on Monday, May 15th, different times of day. If anybody's interested in hearing a tax talk, and again, relevant to the, the article that Chairman Meitzner referenced a minute ago, I make the point that taxes should be fair. We ought to be efficient, government, we should do the things that people demand us to do. The government is there to serve the people, make our lives better and freer, and provide the services that they demand, and we should do that efficiently and effectively. So at the end of the day, we do require revenue to do those things, and we ought to do it in a fair fashion. And so again, I have got a tax talk, I continue to add to that, it's probably getting too big, but I can do this in about 45 minutes and have questions at the end. So if anybody in the community is listening to this, they would like to have a Commissioner Howell come out and do a tax talk in your, in front of your group, I'd be, I'd love to do that. At the end of the day, when I walk away, I feel really good about Sedgwick County at least, and actually, I think that local government looks pretty good. And to the point that Commissioner Dennis was making a minute ago, I think the legislature believes that if we have more tax revenue from anything else, whether it comes from the state of Kansas or even from sales tax, that we're simply going to grow government. And I would argue that our sales tax right now provides 10, you know, 15, 15 to 20 mils of property tax reduction for Wichita. It provides for Sedgwick County about almost six mils of property tax reduction for Sedgwick County as we sit. So again, we have no limits on raising the mill levy, we could raise it if we felt like we had to, but we haven't raised the mill levy. In fact, we've lowered the mill levy by two mils in the last 14 years. I'm very proud of what we do here in Sedgwick County, so I also want to commend, again, Lindsay and our staff for being efficient and effective and conservative. I think we actually have what we, again, I checked it the other day, you'll be glad to know, we are, again, the second lowest mill levy in the state of Kansas out of 105 counties. So we are doing pretty good here in Sedgwick County, not to defend what we do, you know, always looking for efficiencies and ways to save money, but at the end of the day, when you see how, how taxes support the things that people demand, as long as we, as long as we have fair strategies on how we collect tax revenue, it makes you feel pretty good that the people are getting what they want out of Sedgwick County. So with that, I just want to offer to the people that if they have, if they want to invite me out to do a tax talk to any group, a church or an organization or whatever, please let me know, I'd love to come out and do that. And I, you know, I have two of them scheduled already, one for the 15th and one for the 31st of May. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any, anybody else have anything? Any commissioners on, okay, so next item, please.
Other.
That was other, I think, if not, we're good. Okay. Does anybody else have anything under other? Okay, not at this point, so next item, please.
Executive session.
Executive session, Commissioner Howell.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make, I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 1:08 PM.
1:10, let's call 1:10.
1:10 PM for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for real, for purposes of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for use by county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 1:10 PM.
I'll make a second, a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And I understand we're going to be meeting.
We stop broadcast at 1 o'clock, so.
Okay.
YouTube or Facebook, they'll see how this ends up.
All right, let's adjourn to the executive session, or recess to the executive session. Let's adjourn to the executive session, or recess to the executive session. Test, test. Are we back? Okay, we are back. We have returned from executive session. No action taken. Does anything else need to come before the board? I don't see anything. So, thank you for watching. We stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.